Good morning, everybody. Welcome to a very cold January 20, 2024 County Board meeting. And it's great to see, yeah, we all made it. I hope everybody found the slightly later start making it a little bit easier. And I'm Libby Garvey, Chair of the Board for this year. I'm joined on the dais by my colleagues, Vice Chair Takas Karantonis, Members Matt DiFranti, Susan Cunningham, and Maureen Coffey. Thank everybody for coming on this cold day. And there are a number of people joining us remotely, I think, on Microsoft Teams as well. And people will be presenting and talking remotely some. Few things that I go over before getting to our speakers. For in-person speakers, as many of you may know, the podium goes up and down. There's a button right there, that big arrow on it, and you can push that to make it a better height for you if it's too low or too high. If you're submitting documents in part of your testimony, please hand them to Clerk, Ms. Jacobs, who's over to my right, your left. And if you could put your name and contact information on any documents you hand in. For remote speakers, please keep your microphones muted and your cameras off until you're ready to speak. And otherwise, I'll have to interrupt the meeting and ask you to do so. And you will need to unmute yourself using star six if you're on the phone, or you can click on the microphone icon on the toolbar if you're using Teams in an app or a browser. Let's see. Occasionally, we may need to get up and stretch our legs. And we can hear, the sound carries in the back, so don't feel like we can't hear you because we can, but we're here for a long time, and sometimes we need to take a little break. And a reminder for those who are speaking, the purpose of public comment at the beginning of the meeting is for individuals to alert the board to issues that have not been the subject of recent public hearing or an upcoming public hearing. It's basically bring things to our attention we might not be aware of. We do have a one speaker per topic rule, and that is just to allow us to give everybody a chance to speak and get through and get through our regular meeting agenda. And we appreciate everybody's help in hearing to that. If you've got a group of people with you, it's fine to have one person speak, and other people can wave hands like this to show that they agree with you. And there are, of course, lots of ways to communicate with the board besides being here. Open Door Monday is a great one if you want to have a conversation back and forth. And you can write to us at our countyboard@arlingtonva.us, which most people probably know, and find out what the schedule is. And I think that is about it. There's more information available on the website. If you've got any questions, please see our clerks. Mason Kushner is our deputy clerk, and Kendra Jacobs is our clerk. So if you've got any questions, and this didn't make sense to you, or you have other questions, please feel free to ask them. And I think we are now ready for public comment. And Ms. Jacobs, if you'd please call the first two public comments speakers.
Our first speaker is Allegra Sensenegh, followed by Audrey Clement.
All right. Go ahead.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, I take it everybody can hear me. Good morning. My name is Allegra Sensenegh, and I am a homeowner resident in the Arlington Ridge neighborhood. I am speaking this morning on the subject of accessory home stays, commonly referred to as Airbnbs, in the county, and to put before the board questions on how operating requirements are enforced. When the county passed the ordinance permitting Airbnb operation, what did it envision? It likely envisioned a way for owner occupants to generate income from an extra bedroom in the house. It was, hopefully, not intended as a way for absentee investors to operate mini hotels, carving up interiors of houses to maximize the number of bedrooms with negligible common living space. An example is a 1,700-square-foot house originally with three bedrooms and two and a half baths, with its interior now carved up into a railcar of bedrooms, seven bedrooms and six baths, an interior possibly unexamined by the county for what the building code and accessory home stay code require for minimum common areas and bedroom square footage. Accessory use by definition means incidental and subordinate to the principal use and located on the same lot with this principal use. Carving up a house's interior to maximize the number of bedrooms and Airbnb revenue is not an accessory use. The county's regulations regarding accessory home stays dictate a maximum 30-day stay of a guest, six months out of a calendar year residency requirement of owner or tenant operator, a maximum occupancy per square foot operating within the building codes, and requirements for smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, and CO2 detectors. When and how does the county conduct inspections on the above requirements to ensure an annual accessory home stay permit is not being enacted?
Thank you, Ms. Sensenegh. Your time has elapsed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sensenegh. And I probably should have said, having attended a lot of our meetings, we will address your comments after I hear all, we hear all the speakers. And I'll probably ask staff to comment a little bit on Ms. Sensenegh's questions. All right, next speaker.
Our next speaker is Audrey Clement, followed by Anne Bodine.
A lot of questions have been raised about the proposed relocation of the Capital One Arena from DC to Potomac Yard. Economists are skeptical of the promised $12 billion in economic benefits, not only because the venture will move an existing DC-based sports operation across the river, but also because similar ventures have not panned out elsewhere. For example, economist John Charles Bradbury reported in Bloomberg News that Truist Park, where the Atlanta Braves relocated in 2017, loses $115 million a year. Another issue is the fact that the Potomac Yard Metro Rail Station is flood-prone. Axios reports that Potomac Yard will be designated a 10-year floodplain by 2050. With much of Old Town Alexandria already underwater during rain events, Alexandria should reconsider existing plans for Potomac Yard, not double down on further development. Still, another issue is transportation into and out of Alexandria, where major arteries are already congested. The newly opened Potomac Yard Metro Rail Station on the far side of the CSX railroad track was not designed to handle large crowds. By contrast, DC Capital One Arena is located within blocks of six metro rail lines, two of which serve predominantly black neighborhoods in Anacostia and Northeast DC. Relocating the arena to Potomac Yard will require most blacks, who comprise 30% of the Wizards' fan base, to forfeit their easy commute for a connection at Longfellow Plaza and a trek across the river. While I'm not a fan of DEI initiatives designed to discriminate against whites, I oppose making life harder for people of color. The relocation of the Capital One Arena is destined to do just that.
Thank you, Ms. Bodine. Your time has elapsed. I'm sorry, Ms. Clement.
Thank you, Ms. Clement. Our next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Anne Bodine, followed by Kit Norland.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I'm Anne Bodine from Lion Park. Slides, please. I'm here to talk about lot coverage, loophole, and stormwater for development in R5 and R6 in primarily Ashen Heights and Lion Park. Next slide. You can see, I came to the Board in October 2021 to talk about this issue. You can see the lot there in the middle. It's been totally scraped. It's about 20,000 square feet. Developers are looking for oversized lots in the small lot areas of R5 and R6 to come in and put up supersized compounds. Next slide. They can use a 48% lot coverage rule to put up houses that you see here. This is a large ADU garage, very large single-family home with a pool and a poolhouse, and recently a basketball court added because they hadn't yet filled up the lot coverage. Next slide. You also see the effect on impervious surface with the stormwater map from the county, and you can compare it to the neighboring property. So you've got a lot more runoff and flooding. Even with the new stormwater taxes, it's not sustainable in the long term. Next slide. So because the county hasn't addressed the loophole, we now see it's moving into Lion Park in my neighborhood. So you see the lot here, that was a very nice tree brick home, fully scraped in November of 2023. And the irony of the tree preservation sign is not lost on the neighbors. Next slide. That lot was 17,000 square feet. So together, it's almost a full acre that's been scraped of trees with these two developments. You can see that Garfield looms over the neighborhood. That picture in the bottom was taken from my back porch, so everyone in the neighborhood can see this. The garage in that property is larger than my home. Next slide. So options for fixes, we'd be happy to work with you, and I think ATAG would also be happy. Set lot coverage by total lot size irrespective of the zone, limit total coverage to 30% on these supersized lots, and make stormwater coverage the same as lot coverage, and limit both to save trees and save against inundation effects. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bodine. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kit Norland, followed by Mary McLean.
Good morning, Chair Garvey, members of the Board. A new year and new members of the Board make this a perfect time to bear down on resolutions and priorities. I have a simple plea. Make addressing the climate crisis, which Congressman Byer and other leaders call the existential threat of our time, please make it your number-one priority. 2023 marked the hottest since records were kept in 1850. Impacts are accelerating. Certainly, every resident has a part to play, for example, by committing to the Rs, refusing, recycling, reusing, repurposing. But in the face of an existential threat, we need leadership. Sure, lead criteria for buildings, solar panels, planting shrubs on rooftops, measures like these help, and they aren't enough. We cannot pave and build our way out of this crisis. We're losing natural resources, expanding impervious surface, turning Arlington ever faster into a vast urban heat island. What we don't need more of is aspirational plans packed with promises and no teeth. We need action. We need to know day-to-day how our leaders are addressing climate, what staff is dedicated, what budget, across which departments, what benchmarks, what timetables. It's heartening to hear the Board will soon hold a meeting to envision Arlington in 2050. I return to the plea to make climate your top resolution today and every day. If you don't put it first, nothing else matters in the long run. Use your bully pulpit, prioritize budgets, staff, programs that have teeth. Even in a bad budget year, how can we do otherwise than address climate change, which threatens each and every one of us? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Norland. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Mary McLean, followed by John Bloom.
Thank you. I have two slides that go along with the information. I'm here to encourage the Board to support adding back the hours pre-COVID. The COVID emergency is open. I have an LLC spouse, so that's why I wear a mask here. They at the Nature Centers have many more members of the public visiting before they cut the hours to three days from its original six. Arlington Nature Centers are now half of those of Fairfax County, which is in the second Not using the Nature Centers more is a waste of existing county resources that could enhance the education of citizens of all ages for any aspect of environmental education that we need for our adults as well as our children. The impact of taking away the Nature Centers as places for community to learn the value of our natural resources goes along with the Public Spaces Master Plan, part of the comprehensive plan of the county, that you have put your values behind. Put it on the ground, open the Nature Centers back up. I want to encourage you that this brings in all ages of the community as well as all economic groups, because, of course, like libraries and community centers, Nature Centers are free and available to the public. There are fewer volunteer opportunities for our teenagers at both Nature Centers. And I want to encourage you to bring back that opportunity to give positive interactions in the community and opportunities for teenagers to train up to be summer camp counselors and eventually more naturalist forest. I want to also let you know that the Nature Centers are a great opportunity to educate the public because they are all-weather resources, and the naturalists can use what's there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Bloom, followed by Wilson Bender.
Good morning, Chair Garvey, members of the Board. I'm John Bloom. I'm Chair of the Sierra Club's Potomac River Group, and I'm also speaking today on behalf of the Faith Alliance for Climate Solutions and EcoAction Arlington. Our groups are strong supporters of arts transition to quiet, clean, emission-free buses powered by renewable electricity. These buses will be great for climate, equity, public health, and community pride. And no small matter, riders and drivers will love them. They will improve the quality of service, attract more riders, and reduce individual car trips. We're thrilled to hear from multiple sources that the County Board and staff have agreed to order only battery electric buses this year. We believe the presumed choice going forward should be electric buses, and that a clear majority of this Board supports that policy. While this isn't an issue on the formal agenda, it is of immense public interest and deserves a moment of recognition. Arlington is ideal for electric buses, and we can't wait for them to join the fleet. At the same time, we do understand the need to monitor hydrogen technology over time in case it is able to overcome the fundamental costs and environmental challenges it faces today. We're grateful for the enormous amount of work that staff, Board, and community have put into this issue over the past few years, often under difficult circumstances. We look forward to continuing to work with all of you to make this transition a success. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bloom. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Wilson Bender, followed by Catherine Nuss.
Hi. I brought a graphic. So two months ago, I came and spoke about how if you took the bike share out of Penrose Square, it would look like Mad Max. Two weeks ago, some guy pulled a gun out fighting over the parking spaces at Penrose Square, and this is what it looks like any given Sunday. I could have gone down there and taken a picture of the snow this morning, but I didn't think about it. But it looks like that every single day, all the time. I just showed that, hoped to give some veracity to my claims. So there is a group suing Arlington County right now, and their main propagandist is a group called Arletonians for Our Sustainable Future. I'd like to share a quote from their founder. Missing middle will allow housing for families that make $100,000 to $120,000 a year. Would you all like to know what a family in Arlington consisting of an Arlington teacher, an Arlington chef, and an Arlington preschooler makes? It's $115,000 a year. Arletonians for Our Sustainable Future does not like teachers and wants to sue the county to make sure teachers will never live in Arlington. Also, I found this out, we don't do Arlington pre-K because it's too expensive, but it's $14,000 a year. I know some of you all are fighting for affordable childcare, and that's awesome. But what I came here to say is that unending opposition to progress is not a legacy, it's a fault. That's all I got. Oh, yeah. No bike lanes, by the way, by the way, no bike lanes from Southern Arlington all the way here were paved, not the ones on Route 50 or protected bike lanes up and down Claredon Boulevard. You'll like now. See you next month.
Thank you, Mr. Bender. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Catherine Nuss, followed by Sharon Hall.
I am a longtime resident, a resident who hoped to live her retirement years here in Arlington. And this past year, my next-door neighbor sold their property to a developer, a developer who has only communicated with me through an arborist to tell me which of my mature trees in my yard would be killed by the digging of, the scraping of, the property next door to me. So they sent me a map with red Xs on it to show me which trees of mine would be affected by the destruction of the root system. Then they proceeded to, as is their right, to remove all of the branches on the other side of the fence. So now it is only, not only a lopsided tree, it is a tree with strained and stressed roots. It's a mature tree. I also live in a house with two sump pumps. The lot coverage next door is, well, I believe, beyond what is the expectation of lot coverage next door to me. The runoff, at any rate, there are just so many issues taking place next door of my house. I can no longer see the sky from my only two southern windows of my house. It's a house under 2,000 square feet. It is a single level. I can no longer see the sky. They have proceeded to put a sign that says "Tree Preservation" up against the fence next to the tree that they tell me will die. I don't know how this is a sustainable way of quality life in Arlington.
Thank you, Ms. Nuss.
Our final speaker is Sharon Hall.
I'm here representing my mother, Patricia Cargill. I'm her aide and POA. She's 73 years old. She has physical and mental ailments and disabilities. She also has dementia. I am here to ask for the county's help in addressing an issue with the Whitefield Commons Wesley Housing, where she resides. After returning from relocation, they were renovating for, I think, almost two years, a year and a half. We moved back in in January of 2023. Since my mother had signed a lease in 2017, we had requested accessible apartment back then, and we were told that we would be put on, she would be put on a waiting list. Each year after that, we request if there was anything available for her, and we were told. So when we got back from the renovation, it was imperative that we try to get her such an apartment that she didn't have to walk up five flights of stairs in order to get there. So they did find us something that had less stairs for her to climb. When we did move in, there were some issues with the apartment, the outside door that everyone comes into, it was banging against the wall, so it would make it make an indention into the brick wall, and you could hear it in her apartment, it was so loud, and that was, you know, morning, noon, and night. So we, I brought these up to the management. Everything I have is documented in writing. I reached out to Human Services. They sent me an email with different resources to reach out to HUD, Fair Housing, Health Department, Bugata, Legal Services, and I reached out to all of them, trying to get help to resolve these issues. November's...
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I have papers you can look.
Yes, if you'd give them to the clerk, that's fine. Madam Clerk, I think that's our finer speaker.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to go through the speakers in order, but I think I will start, go out of order just to start with Ms. Hall. Yeah, Ms. Hall, thank you for coming and telling your situation. I think you should probably talk with Kevin Connolly, who is right here, and maybe he could meet with you out in the lobby, if that makes sense, okay, and help you out, okay? Thank you. Thank you for coming. Our first speaker was Allegra Sensenegh, and she was concerned about Airbnb and how it is enforced. And we did pass an ordinance, and it does have a lot of requirements and enforcement, but I think I will turn to our manager to fill us in a bit on how it is enforced.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would, if you would like also, I know Kevin's going to be busy afterwards, give the details to Kevin, because our Commissioner of the Revenue, along with our Community Planning and Housing Development Division, have responsibility for enforcing the ordinance, and we need the specific details. And we get a number of complaints. We'd be more than happy to follow up. Some of those things sounded concerning, but I can't comment on them specifically until we follow up.
Thank you. And so, Ms. Sensenegh, I hope you're still here.
I'm still here.
Thank you. I'm glad you're still here. So if, we've got your contact information, and we will be reaching out to you for some more information, if that's all right, and see if we can follow up on this particular instance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker was Audrey Clement, and she was talking about the Capital One Arena in Potomac Yards. And we are following this closely. Of course, this is in Alexandria. You might want to talk to the Alexandria City Council, because this really is an Alexandria project. We are watching it closely. We are concerned about transportation issues, but there is a limit to how much authority we have on this particular issue. Board members have any other comments on this particular one? I will continue moving. Ms. Bodine was here talking about trees and lot coverage and stormwater, as did, let me see, this sort of fit in with some other comments we had, I think, from Ms. Norland. And I would...
Ms. Nuss.
Ms. Nuss, thank you so much. Yes, and Ms. Nuss. And we are going to be with the budget, and we all often go over our work plan for our Department of CPHD, and that will be a discussion. It's been a discussion for a long time, lot coverage, and whether we need to look at it. And we've got two new board members, and I think there will be some new conversations going on, and we are very aware of the issue and do share many of the concerns that we hear. Any comments that board members would like to make on this?
I can briefly, Madam Chair. Ms. Bodine, non-conforming lots, what you brought in front of us, is really a problem. It's not a very, as a particular problem, it doesn't occur very often, but when it occurs, it's a real problem. It is not very common that we have a 20,000-square-foot place, a lot, in our 5 and our 6 district. But I have enough of these to trigger some, you know, study here. This is one of the reasons, not the main reason, but one of the reasons that incentivizes us to look at lot covers and how it works and how it doesn't. And this, I agree with a general concern about that. That said, I can, I yield, I will talk to Ms. Nuss.
Thank you. Thank you. And Ms. Norland, I also say that the climate crisis, I think we do have quite a bit, people, my colleagues may want to talk a little bit about this, but when we come to the budget, I do believe it is cross-cutting, and that we need to look at climate issues and how to mitigate them, and how to be more resilient, and what we can do to preserve the climate and prevent as much change as we can. And that will come up during the budget, and it is cross-cutting. I think we will hear questions about that as we get into that. Any other comments on climate change? Okay. Then we have Mary McLean, who I've known for a long time. It's nice to have you back again, Mary. And she had asked about adding hours to the Nature Center and the value of Nature Centers. I bring this up every budget season, and I'll probably bring it up again. I agree. I think there are issues with staffing, and perhaps there's some innovative ways we can work on that moving forward. And then we had Mr. Bloom coming and talking about electric buses and wanting more electric buses. We will be discussing that also very soon. And I think there is a lot of interest in the Board about moving to electric buses. There's also concern about knowing a lot and whether we should be doing a pilot or not, which is basically where we are. We have decided not to proceed with a pilot on hydrogen buses, fuel cell, so you won't be seeing that. Colleagues, yes, please.
I'll just use this as the one, one sort of, to try and make catch, catch all succinct comments on the two or three or four speakers who came in on climate. First, I think Mr. Karantonis nearly said it on non-conforming. There are legal issues, as you know, that we have to sort through on non-conforming. And so, that doesn't, that doesn't mean we can't regulate, but I will look for the slide deck, and then I'll work on it. Ms. Norland, I agree, I think there are two defining challenges of our time, and I think you might agree as well, in the sense that racial inequity and economic, the poverty that we have in our community, 24,000, 25,000 people living under $45,000 a year for a household of four, is the other that I would submit that is an urgent priority. But I think it's fair that we need to do more on climate, and that's part of why I've been pushing quite a bit on electric buses. But there are other ways in which we can work on it, and I think you've identified some of them. One for me is we need a shorter-term goal than 2050. It's too late if we are just focusing on net zero by 2050. So happy to continue to work on that. There are legal ways in which we are limited. Ms. Nuss, your story is frustrating, and so those legal ways that the state does not give us the authority that we want, we need, as you pointed out, we need to keep fighting and working on those. We can't change the math sometimes, or who is in certain seats, but do need to keep working on that. So thanks, Madam Chair.
Ms. Cunningham.
Yep, and I just wanted to add, both to the Nature Center conversation and the electric bus conversation, for both of For both of those issues, I think we also want to make sure we're inviting our school board and school community colleagues in. I, I think we have a real focus on our teens and, and our young people, and stitching our whole community together. And the Nature Center certainly can be a backdrop for that, both in the training programs and in having a roof over people's heads while they're spending time together. And then secondly, on the electric bus issue, I think that also is, merits a very close collaboration with APS as we think about the long-term fleet transitions, you know, and whether there are two fleets and how that works. We have very finite space. We have some finite resources at times, both electricity and the fossil fuels behind them, but also financials. So I would really encourage the community to encourage us and our school board colleagues and both staffs to kind of get started on this. There's a little bit, certainly, there's a lot actually happening behind the scenes, but it hasn't all been pulled together yet, and I'd like to see that in the coming years.
Thank you. That probably will happen somewhat in budget discussions, I hope. Ms., Ms. Coffey.
Thank you. I think to speak similar to Matt, to the broad climate issues that have been brought today, this is a top-tier priority, I think, for everyone, especially for myself. I think that as we look towards the future, it's hard to say that solving many of these other issues will matter a whole lot if we don't have a world to live in with those issues solved. At the same time, I think we really need to make sure we're not thinking of this as a zero-sum game. I think there's really interesting things we can do, especially with this visioning process that we're about to embark on, about how do we integrate climate, climate consciousness, environmental protections into every single thing we do, and we're thinking about transportation and electric buses. The art fleet is 0.2% of our total county emissions, not public, but as a whole community, and we really look at that pie chart, and we see that all other transportation is one-third of our county emissions. And so how do we get more people onto the art bus fleet so that we're reducing the one-third by much more than we're reducing the 0.2%? And I think for me, my, my big hope is that as we're looking deep into the future, we can start making those much more intentional strategic choices that really make bigger-bang impact while also continuing to do the small things as we go.
Thank you, Ms. Coffey. And I agree, sometimes it's not so much what kind of buses we have, we just get, need to get more people on them. I agree. Besides looking at what kind of buses we have. Mr. Karantounis?
Yep. I would always argue that the, the climate crisis actually is a crisis of our current status of civilization, right? So everything else that we don't get right manifests itself at the degree we don't get right to deal with the climate. We don't get right housing, we don't get right transportation, we don't get right poverty, income inequality, et cetera. So it would be kind of paradoxical if we got everything else right but the climate wrong. Actually, it's very consistent that we have a, and this is why it's a, a whole, a whole society crisis right now. And I think Ms. Nuss's testimony is very illustrative of how we see that from the point of view of the 96% of emissions, which is us, not your government. Somebody thought that incompetent pruning is just fine. Somebody thought that disregarding the ecology of a tree, just for the next-door neighbor is absolutely okay. That, that shows a lack of, actually, a lack of empathy and understanding that is frightening. Is that something that we, as a government, can, can actually regulate? To a certain degree, I aspire to be able to do that, but after all, it's up to us here to really put some serious boundaries to, to how people are seeing their lifestyle. We're still at the top of emissions on everything. Ms. Carvey is very right. We have to get people to use these electric buses. Now, I would always say electric buses are smoother, better, they are, this is a more efficient fleet that, that invites the transit rider to understand that it's the first-class rider that we want to make. But this is really an everyday struggle, and I, I align with you on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karantounis. And then we had Mr. Bender, Wilson Bender, came to talk about a number of issues that added up to me for better livability and affordability to living in Arlington, price of housing, childcare, and that is something that we are constantly working for, and also improving bike paths. We had, Ms. Cunningham, did you want to speak, or is that just a residual? Like, okay. And then Catherine Nuss has been mentioned a number of times. Again, the, the issue of lot coverage, and I think this issue of trees getting killed on your own property because the roots go one to the other, that is really concerning. I think legally at the moment, there's not much we can do about it, looking at my, our council, but perhaps moving forward, there may be a way to, to get into our own, as you say, it's frustrating that people do this. How much we can control, some of that is with zoning and lot setback, and I do hope we will be, setbacks from lot, how close you can build a lot, and I do think we will be having that, that discussion. It would be really nice if we could have some kind of limit on what you could do to destroy the tree in the, the yard next door. And then lastly, Susan Hall came, and we, I think, connecting her with Mr. Connolly. You can meet her out in the, in the lobby now, if that's okay? Is that all right? Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, colleagues, anything more to add? Ms. Coffey, yes.
I was just some speech to the apartment management issue, and say I'm glad we're getting you connected with Kevin. But also that I think what you're experiencing is something that so many people experience, and one of my priorities for this year is to really work on our resources for renters and having much more clear communication about where you can go to help fix some of these issues. I think that I hear so frequently from my peers, but from across the community, that issues come up when you're renting, right? Landlord relationships are not fun, it's very difficult, there's a huge power asymmetry. And yet, where do you go when that happens? And so making sure that we have resources that really direct you of what are your rights, what are the opportunities you have, who can you talk to, so that you're not reaching out to every person under the sun, just hoping that someone will get back to you. So this is a really big thing for me. Thank you for coming and sharing your story today.
Yeah, thank you. And I have heard this from other people, too. We need, we're trying to get to the one-stop shopping, so you don't just get bounced around. We need to obviously improve. Mr. DeFranti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just very briefly, in listening to your comments, Ms. Nuss, I'm not quite 100% clear whether you are connected with a person in our, in our government that can help you. So what we'll do is I'll find your email out of the, of the signup, and I will connect you with Mr. Connolly. We are circumscribed by law to some extent, but, and you did acknowledge that the branches issue, that's like a first-year law school, everybody asks, but I do think we want someone to at least be, to let you know and be in contact with you, to do what all we can. And so I'll send that email just to connect you. Okay, all right.
And you saw Mr. Con, he's, Mr. Connolly is, anyway, you could connect with him, too.
If you can do that, thank you.
That would be fine, yeah, thank you. Okay, I think we are ready to move on to our consent agenda. Ms. Jacobs, has anything been pulled from our consent agenda?
Yes, item number 20, related to funding for small business support services in the National Landing Area, has been pulled, moved to Tuesday.
Thank you. I would like to have a motion to move the consent agenda moving, minus item 20. Thank you, Mr. DeFranti, is there a second? All right, just moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you, motion passes 5, 5-0, and I appreciate that. We will, I'd like to just say that item 20's been pulled, so that will be heard on Tuesday. And anybody who wants to speak on that item can register with the County Board's website starting today, now, and, or you can also just simply call the Board Office, 703-228-3130 to register to speak at our public hearing, which will be held at our carryover meeting on Tuesday. We did pass a number of, of items with the consent item, the consent agenda, just items that aren't controversial, but that doesn't mean that they're not important. So I'd like to cover just a few of the more interesting items that we had. Item 10 was a use permit for Reeves Land, Reeves Farmhouse, Reevesland Farmhouse, and that use permit goes to the Reeves Farmhouse Unified Residential Development, and it's going to allow for historically sensitive renovations, in keeping with the intended purpose of this residential structure, and also have some site improvements by the intended purchaser, which is Habitat for Humanity. They are not new modifications since 2015. The county has been trying to secure a purchaser for the Reeves Farmland, Reevesland Farmhouse. Habitat for Humanity has been negotiating with the county since 2020 to acquire the property to operate a home for adults with developmental disabilities. And this is a project that's been going on for, as I said, a long time, 2015 with Habitat for Humanity, but even longer here in Arlington. I'm just really pleased it's moving forward. But because Habitat for Humanity does not currently own the property, the county does, the Board also gave its consent with this item to consider the use permit amendment by the applicant as the intended purchaser of the property, which allows them to initiate a review of land disturbance permits, so that they can really continue on with renovations as soon as they acquire the ownership of the property. Next, item 11, Barcroft Apartments Use Permit Amendment, and the Board approved this amendment to revise the condition for Barcroft Apartments, and that regards, is regarding the affordable housing commitment, which is associated with it. This use permit remains consistent with the original intent of the use permit approval. The applicant renovating this phase of the Barcroft Apartments is pursuing Virginia Housing Loan financing to assist in the renovations. The Board action ensures that if the development is financed with funds from Virginia Housing, the use permit is in accordance with Virginia Housing's debt financing requirements. In other words, this enables them to get, get some support from Virginia Housing with their affordable housing efforts. The Board's action is, is also in effect, in the unlikely event, we do not expect this, the Barcroft Apartments owner defaults on the loan, the number of affordability restrictions would decrease from 93 committed affordable units to at least 19 within this phase of development. Again, we don't expect that to happen, it's just to enable them to move forward with the financing from the state. We also, item 16, Water Pollution Control Plant Upgrades. We approve the award of a contract between Arlington County Board and PC Construction, and this will provide design-build services for upgrades to the solid handling facilities at the water pollution control plant. This plant treats wastewater, as I think most of us know, generated in Washington and in portions actually of surrounding jurisdictions, and produces what's known as biosolids. And this product is expensive to store and expensive to dispose of. However, our facilities that carry out this process are right now beyond their useful life, and they need replacing. Doing so, this process will yield a higher-quality biosolids product with more disposal options, so that we can actually use these, this product, and even potential retail and residential use, and renewable natural gas, which I think is particularly exciting, which could reduce the, can reduce the county's dependence on fossil fuels. The Board's approval is contracted, one of two funding approvals associated with this replacement project, so you'll hear more about it, and it has a guaranteed maximum price amendment for the main project's construction. That will come to the Board in the late, in late 2025 or early 2026. We also accepted a number of grants and local funding for Arlington projects and services. I will tell you, since I've been on the Board, it's always been interesting to me that we have to vote to accept money. It always has seemed kind of a, a no-brainer that we would accept money. Item 20 is still listed up here, but actually, we are taking that up on Tuesday, so that was not a part of the consent items it was going to be, but it is not. The other items listed here are the 200 and, about 292,000 from Community Solutions Build for, Build for Zero grant, and that's to build staff capacity within our Department of Human Services for Homeless Management Information System, which can support our continuum of care, safety net providers, and hopefully end homelessness. Item 24 was about almost 100,000 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services to implement primary care screening outpatient same-day access components. I think maybe this is all up here, and you can read it as well. And then item 25, little over half a million, also from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health Development Services, to continue implementation of mental health developmental disabilities and substance use disorder programming by a Department of Human Services. We really appreciate this help from this, from the state in dealing with the mental health crisis that we have, and that will help provide some more employees to, to help our population. I think that is, we also had two requests to advertise. That's the final thing. These are gonna, items that are gonna come forward in two separate, two hearings, two separate items. One was, will be heard by the County Board in February, next month, and that'll establish a temporary performance parking pilot program in commercial quarters, and that will permit periodic administrative changes to metered parking rates to help address peak parking demand and utilization. So there will be some changes in this one area as a pilot to see if this is something we want to do countywide. And then lastly, item 28, that will also be heard not only by the Board, but by the Planning Commission in February, and this would update the sanitary sewer collection system plan, and that was last updated in 2002, so it's time to do that again. This sets the policy and infrastructure improvements necessary to meet the anticipated growth and development within the county. People are often concerned that we have the, do we have the infrastructure to handle the growth we're getting? This is part of our continuing work to make sure that we do. Any other comments that people would like to make on the consent agenda? Mr. Karantounis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, there is one item that I am particularly pleased to, just to celebrate. We, we are in for, applying for funding through the congestion mitigation, air quality, and the regional surface transportation programs, both, I believe, are managed by the N V T A, by the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority. They, they contain $1 million for South, for the South George Mason Drive improvements, that's from, that's close Columbia Pike. $6 million for the Arlington County commuter services, talking about supporting our commuter services and public transit. $750,000 for the Arlington Boulevard Trail extension from North Edison to George Mason Drive. God knows how many hours we have spent here to get there. I thank everybody for getting us here. And $250,000 of additional funding for capital bike share. I, I really think these are, this, this was one of the items I was, that was most pleased to see coming to us and, and going forward with applying for that money, and I hope what we are going to have is.
Hopefully we will. Thank you. Any other comments? All right, Ms. Cunningham.
Just real quickly, on the Reeves property, really exciting to see that moving forward and to meet all of the needs of open space and preserving open space. It was a great sledding picture there yesterday, but also really inviting and keeping our, our community members with all abilities in our community. So excited about that. I also want to just put a pin in, as we, one of the items we put forward was the East Falls Church Bus Bay. It's a very exciting, you know, replacement of bus shelters, and it is not one of the bigger Wamata collaboration projects, but we, we all want to keep an eye on how those projects go. They're, they're often quite complex, and we want to make sure that we are doing everything we can to, to control costs there going forward, as well as in the budget process, looking at the planning team's work plan about when we'll be able to get to the broader East Falls Church planning. So that's it.
Thank you. And I can attest, having been talking about Reeves Farmland, that house and that whole plot since 2012, and it's been going along, the sledding hill has been a constant. Everybody wants to make sure we kept the sledding hill, so I'm glad people had a lot of fun with that recently. All right, I think that brings us to our regular agenda. Madam Clerk, would you like to call the first item, please?
Yes, item number 30, items number 30A and B, item related to 1501 Arlington Boulevard, the Red Lion Hotel Project. 30A1 is a general land use plan amendment, followed by 2, which is a rezoning, and 3, which is a site plan amendment for the development, as well as 30B, which is an ordinance of vacation.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joining me today is Adam Watson from C P H D, and also Jane Kim and Mike Kaluski are joining us from the Department of Environmental Services. So over to you, Mr. Watson.
Thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, so I will be covering four items this morning in my presentation, three items associated with the site plan amendment, and then also the ordinance of vacation associated with that site plan. So this site is located at 1501 Arlington Boulevard, near Roslyn. It's comprised of the Williamsburg Apartments, the L S Arms Apartments, and the existing Red Lion Hotel. It has frontages on North Pierce Street and off of Fairfax Drive. Just a little bit of background about this site, the existing apartment buildings and the hotel originally constructed in 1950s. In 1985, there was a site plan approved for the site to allow the new addition to the hotel as it exists today. And then the County Board in 2019 approved another site plan amendment for this site for a 10-story residential tower and 12-story, 160-unit hotel that was approved and never constructed. So this, this project will add the Williamsburg Apartments parcel to the site area, and also will add GLEP Note 13, a special affordable housing protection district, to that parcel as well, and it will also supersede the 2019 approval if approved. In terms of a general land use plan, the site is designated as high-medium residential with a base site plan density up to 3.24 F A R. As I mentioned, we are requesting to add Note 13 to that Williamsburg Apartment parcel, where it hadn't been previously added for the purpose of the special affordable housing protection district. In terms of the rezoning, the applicant is requesting to rezone the area shown here in blue from R A H to R A 4.8, and that's also consistent with the general land use plan designation for this site. designation for this site. To summarize the applicant's proposal, they would be expanding the site by about 14,000 square feet, redeveloping the site with an eight-story multifamily residential building, a total density of 4.76 FAR, 446 dwelling units. Parking is within the building. The applicant's actually going to be reusing a portion of the existing underground garage ratio for the parking would be 0.57 spaces per dwelling unit. There's also zoning modifications for additional density, reduced parking and loading requirements, and density exclusions for below-grade storage space. In addition, Mr. Kaluski is here with me from the Real Estate Bureau. We have three areas that are requested to be vacated in order to facilitate the site plan. So jumping into our analysis, I want to begin with the special affordable housing protection district, which is an overlay district on the GLUP map that ensures that existing low and moderate income apartments are replaced on sites that are planned for densities above 3.24 FAR or higher when redevelopment is requested. So this site plan amendment, of course, triggers that, given that the density is above 3.24 FAR onsite. There's 28 units existing, 42 bedrooms between the Williamsburg and the LS Arms Apartments. And typically with the SAHPD, we have those units replaced on a one-for-one basis, excuse me, replaced on a one-for-one basis with bedrooms rather than units. So happy to say that the applicant's proposal is to do just that, and to commit onsite 22 CAFs totaling 42 bedrooms for one-bedroom units, 16 two-bedroom units, two, three-bedroom units also. This proposal matches one-for-one, the existing bedrooms onsite. It's slightly fewer units overall, but that's because we're getting a higher proportion of family-sized units. And in fact, actually, since Planning Commission, the applicant has swapped three of the one-bedroom units for an additional three-bedroom unit. So we're also, again, requesting to add Note 13 to the Williamsburg parcel. In addition, we have the Roslin Station Area Plan Addendum from 1992. This does not provide any site-specific guidance, but it did set out a couple objectives that staff used to evaluate this project, including creating a more urban form, trying to exemplify good architecture, urban design practice, increasing our opportunities for housing, and providing an integrated system of transportation that focuses on the multimodal approach. In addition to that, we have off-street parking guidelines, which for this site would allow a parking ratio as low as 0.4 spaces per dwelling unit for market-rate building. So to just summarize how this project evolved through the SPRC process, I think maybe the most noticeable change was that the applicant worked with staff to revise the architecture to provide a less uniform, more dynamic architecture or character during SPRC. This is a very long frontage, and during SPRC, people asked if the perceived width or length of this building could be reduced, and the applicant came back with a very well-received evolution in terms of the overall facade design, also using higher-quality materials. Couple of other areas the applicant was very good at addressing, which I think was another reason why this was so well-received through SPRC. There are at-grade transformers, and they are going to be screened with this decorative grate that shows trees that call back to Hillside Park that's just on the north side of this site, so a good biophilic element introduced along the streetscape. They pulled back the building massing at the corner of North Pierce Street and Fairfax Drive to provide more access for pedestrians and access to the bike room down there. And then in addition, at the bottom of the screen, you can see they also revised the lobby area to make it more prominent and to add a number of more biophilic features, including this planted canopy, and just generally adding more plantings in general. So in terms of our zoning and policy requirements, this this project meets all of our zoning requirements, including for land use and building height, the building is actually about 62 feet shorter than it could otherwise be under the district maximum. It fulfills our SAHPD policy. Again, we're getting a nice portion of family-sized units here. It furthers the goals of our plan addendum. We're creating a net 418 new dwelling units onsite in a transit-rich multimodal area, definitely creating a more urban form. We're going to be eliminating surface parking lots, reducing the width of curb cuts, new streetscape and ADA improvements as well. And then in addition to that, the applicant has ensured and working with us prior to the start of SPRC that there'll be ample space on the right-of-way for that future Arlington Boulevard Trail capital project. So again, the proposed parking ratio is also consistent with our residential parking guidelines. In terms of community benefits, I already spoke about the affordable dwelling units, which is a large portion of this this package. In addition to that, they are doing the green building incentive policy at the 0.35 FAR level. This is about the the sort of mid-tier of our green building incentive policy, which includes 20% energy optimization, post-occupancy energy star score of at least 80, all the prerequisites here on the screen, as well as three items from our extras list. In terms of community engagement, we began back in late July with an online engagement, followed by two hybrid SPRC meetings. As I mentioned, the project was overall well-received, and the applicant was very receptive to constructive feedback that they received during the SPRC. Then this month in January, we went to Transportation Commission, Housing Commission, and Planning Commission, all of which recommended unanimous approval per the county manager's recommendation. So overall, we think that this really would be a substantial improvement of the site over the existing conditions, and it definitely advances several of our key goals. Affordable housing probably being one of the most prominent of the bunch, again, 22 onsite committed affordable units. In terms of sustainable design, we're getting Lead Gold certification, 20% energy optimization, new housing, this is a, this was a key component of the plan addendum, as well as the GLUP. I think improved urban design definitely improves streetscape. The applicant will be undergrounding power lines along the site frontage, you know, just as a standard requirement of any site plan. And, you know, the streetscape improvements are going to go a long way to further our master transportation goals. So with that, we recommend adoption of all of the items, including the ordinance of vacation. And this concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. And now we'll turn to the applicant. I don't know who's starting, Mr. Cummings, one of the Mr.s or whichever.
Mr. Cummings will be starting. Good to see you all as well. Nicholas Cummings, of course, with Walsh Kaluski here on behalf of the applicant or partners. We're excited to bring you the Red Lion project today for consideration. As many of you are aware, there was a site plan approval for this property in 2019. That project proposed a small condominium building and a new hotel, but given the difficulties in the hospitality market during COVID, it became infeasible to move forward with that. Fortunately, ORE Partners stepped in and joined with hotel owners to bring you the application you're reviewing today, just for a single multifamily building delivering 446 much-needed residential units, of which 22 will be committed affordable housing, including two three-bedroom units. This was a change made after the Planning Commission meeting, where some members mentioned that they would like to see more family-sized units in this area, and we worked the next day, and I commend my client for doing it, the next day over the course of business hours to come up with a new proposal that was then accepted and presented to the Housing Commission. So that was just a great, you know, final change with this. Project is continually improved during both staff and community review by the SPRC. I think Mr. Watson described that very eloquently. I know that we also worked prior to and just after initial submission of the project to accommodate what you can see in the rendering here, and this is just our sort of conceptual vision of what it might look like, not necessarily what the manager or others will put into CIP for the pathway, but we worked hard to accommodate the the dimensions for Fairfax Drive to allow for this bike path to be built, and that required us to pull the building back after we'd actually gone to great effort to design it. But we were happy to work with staff. We think this is going to be a great amenity for the neighborhood. Of course, we worked on the design. I think you're going to see more on the design in this presentation, particularly the biophilic elements, which are very unique, really, and a great, great addition to this project, given that it's not something with a substantial amount of actual, you know, planned open space, but we included a lot of plant life, a lot of biophilic design elements. Obviously, of course, we have the Lead Gold Certification participation in the green building incentive program at the 0.35 FAR level, and all of that, all of which, you know, that includes. So with that, Tyler Orr is going to speak to you about ORE Partners and the building as well, so please continue.
Good morning, everyone. I just want to thank everyone for and staff for the last 25, for the last 25 years, ORE Partners has been working in Arlington County, and I think this project really exemplifies how we've been able to work with the county and work with everyone to get a much better project. This building has really transformed, as you could see with Adam Watson's earlier representation, and has really come into a much, much better building and has exemplified everything we wanted to do here. And as Adam had mentioned earlier, pulling back the corner really made for much cleaner access for pedestrians and everyone around, as well as pulling back the building for the bike lane. All right, trying to get to the next slide, but while I'm doing, there we go. So here you can see the biophilic elements, which we had mentioned previously, the our pool amenity deck, as well as our entrance. One of the main comments during SPRC is that you couldn't really find the main entrance. We brought in this biophilic landscape canopy, which really brings in a unique feature and is going to be a unique feature for Arlington County. So here you can see our garage access from Arlington Boulevard, and we plan to have a area within for Uber drop-off so that no one will be parked. There is an interim condition at the before the bike lane will be developed, which will have on-street parking, but we wanted to make sure once that parking goes away that you can park within the garage, so if there's deliveries or anything like that. And then you can see our other secondary entrance at the corner of North Pierce, as well as our loading and our primary building access. So we have 446 units, 255 parking spaces, and 11 EV parking spaces, day one, and 39 EV-ready, and 180 bike parking spaces and two loading spaces. And I won't mention it too much because Adam Watson, I think, covered this fairly well, but the biggest thing that was not covered, we are reusing the existing garage at the Red Lion Hotel, so that is going to be a big source of embodied carbon that we're going to be taking care of. And then the three extras list that was not mentioned earlier, we'll be using the building lifecycle impact reduction, advanced energy metering, and procurement of off-site solar. Then here you can see the all the surrounding neighborhood and the connectivity of the Red Lion project, and this new bike lane will really connect to Rosin and to Courtenham House. And here's an overview of the landscape plan. So in B, you can see our pool deck, which is going to be very green and a lot of trees, and be a great amenity for residents. E is going to be our rooftop deck amenity, which will have grills and an observation deck, so you can see into Washington, DC. C is a tranquil interior courtyard and just the quiet place for serenity. And D is our bio-retention and another courtyard surrounded by units. And you can see we have planting all around the entire project. And here's a close-up of our landscape canopy. We really took a lot of inspiration from the Sorrel Store in New York City, as you can see in A. And then we will also have some unique walkway in front of the entrance, as well as a the mesh covering you can see in D for the transformer of all that had been mentioned earlier. And here's another close-up of the landscape canopy, and we think it will be a really unique feature and really beautiful for everyone to come to. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. Cummings, for the moment? Thank you. All right. Thank you so much. And now we will turn to our commissions. I think we have a few here. I think Ms. Steinberger is here from our Planning Commission. Are you prepared to come forward? Come on. I think I get your comments. Excuse me? Chair.
Hi, Sarah Steinberger, representing Planning Commission today. Good to see you all. Yes, we heard this item at our Planning Commission hearing this month, and it was really very well-received. It was clear that the SPRC meetings and process had gone well, there'd been meaningful dialogue and change and growth to the project that everyone's very satisfied with. The bulk of the discussion really focused on support for the current residents in terms of could we get them back into the newly-built site once that was up and running, and making sure, you know, that would be, you know, an option for them should, you know, they want, as well as the composition of the affordable units onsite. We did during the course of the hearing make the request, well, if we wanted to get more family-sized units, meaning something in the three-bedroom range, could we make a trade in terms of some of the one-bedroom units, which is candidly something we see a lot of when we're getting affordable units from developers, but getting something in the three-bedroom range is not something we see as often. And so there was a good amount of discussion in that regard, and we were very pleased that, you know, ORE Properties was receptive to that in the hearing, and we heard, you know, within two days or so afterwards, that they were going to make that switch so we could get the extra three-bedroom unit. There was some discussion about, not just for this project, but in general, that while this is going to be at 60% AMI, you know, there's concerns about what the availability in the community for properties like a 30% AMI would be, because that's where there is also a need in the community, but I think that's a larger conversation and was not one that belabored this project generally. And I do want to note that the reuse of the garage was very positively noted by several Planning Commissioners, including Commissioners Tarly explicitly, so I'm happy to answer any other questions, but that's sort of
Thank you.
where things fell. It was unanimously supported by the commission.
That's great. It tends to make our job easier. Thank you. And I think we have Ms. McIntyre here from C2E2.
Yes, good morning. I'm Joan McIntyre, and welcome to our new board members. I'm speaking on behalf of Climate Change, Energy, and Environment Commission. While the applicant is participating in the green building incentive policy at the 3.5 level, you know, in our review of it, we still see it fall somewhat short of what we think's necessary to meet the county's goals for the community energy plan and addressing climate change in general. Our overall score is 69%, which is more or less on par, maybe slightly higher than than what we see with with other projects, but still room for for improvement. As with most projects, we focus pretty heavily on electrification. Addressing climate change means eliminating the use of fossil fuels. So every time we build a new building, it means we're extending with using fossil gas, it means we're extending use of fossil fuels for a decade or longer into the future. So and in this case, it's somewhat mixed. They are planning on using gas for the HVAC system, primarily for the ventilation system and preconditioning the air as it's brought into the building. It's their own energy performance model doesn't does indicate that there are all-electric options that are available, highly efficient, primarily the use of heat pumps with auxiliary electric gas, and we have seen a few developments lately that have gone with that that option. So there, you know, we strongly encourage the builder to really look at more closely at at those options. On the other hand, they are opting for all-electric hot-water heat that primarily, however, they are going with resistance in-unit heat, which is, from an energy perspective, not ideal. There are heat pump alternatives that would be much more efficient, so obviously would save money for the residents on their utility bills, and of course, the more we can save on energy, the best, that's kind of the first step in addressing kind of reduction in energy and and carbon emissions. So, you know, would again strongly encourage that they look at at some of these heat pump options. It does require somewhat different design approaches in order to deal with those those types of technologies, but certainly very doable. Also, we do look at energy efficiency. Again, as I mentioned, that's kind of one of the key starts is get something that's as energy-efficient as possible. They're committing to 20%, which is basically the green building incentive minimum, although starting later, middle of last year, that actually has gone up to about 24% for projects entering the SPRC process. So and again, their energy performance model actually suggests that there's lots of opportunities that they could get to 25% or higher, and we would definitely strongly encourage them to continue to pursue those options in order to kind of maximize the energy efficiency of the buildings. Unoccurring, EV charging is another issue we look at, and again, they're going with the minimum required by the green building incentive policy. We tend to encourage 10% of spaces being EV with EV charging and We tend to encourage 10% of spaces being EV, with EV charging and up to 50% EV-ready. That means at least having the conduits there in place so that as, you know, residents, you know, shift to electric vehicles, they can, you know, quickly provide the infrastructure needed to support that without additional investment. So again, strongly encourage them to continue to look into that. They are going with some rooftop solar, I believe, as part of the GBI program, but they do have a pretty large roof there. So again, you know, opportunities of seeing where they might be able to expand the solar on the rooftops, and if there's opportunities to combine that with green roofs, all the better. Definitely appreciate their efforts to improve the biophilia of the nation, kind of pulling the setbacks back a little bit to get more rooms for trees and native plantings. Again, encourage them to continue to look for options to, you know, improve the biophilia of the projects, kind of hard with these big blocky projects that pretty much take up all the space they can for the building itself, but, you know, opportunities for, you know, kind of making that connection to nature much, much closer for the residents. Again, we also commend them for actually reusing the parking lot. That's obviously a good cost-saving measure on their part, but also given the energy intensity of cement, you know, a good way of starting to reduce the overall carbon, embedded embodied carbon in the building, and strongly encourage them to continue to look at material selections for the building that would further reduce the embodied carbon of the building. Again, we have to think beyond just the operational and the broader impact of what these buildings have in terms of carbon emissions. And one thing on this in particular, since there are several buildings that will be demolished, or rather, I think we should be thinking of deconstructed, is that we should, you know, kind of, again, they should be encouraged to actually maximize the ability to basically deconstruct so that the materials can be reused, you know, at least elsewhere, as well as, or recycled, rather than just going into a landfill sometime. Again, that's a good option of reducing broader carbon emissions. So again, you know, strongly encourage the applicant. I think it has the potential to be, you know, a very good building in terms of meeting the county's climate change, so we'd strongly encourage them to do that. We are facing a climate crisis. We've just completed the hottest year on record. So, you know, we, every decision that gets made, whether it's in the public or private sector, has to take into account climate change, and they really do have to think of what their impact is going to be on for future generations. So thank you.
Thank you. And then I believe perhaps virtually we have our Housing Commission represented with Mr. Macbeth.
Yes, thank you. The Housing Commission, at its January 11th meeting, considered the Red Lion Inn Site Plan project, and similar to the other commissions, we were overwhelmingly in support of the project, and we voted unanimously to support the staff recommendation to approve the project. The project achieves many affordable housing master plan goals, such as increasing the amount of family-sized units and preventing the loss of market rate affordable housing. Similar to the Planning Commission, our discussion was primarily focused on a temporarily, or temporary relocation of current residents. The Commission asked the developer to stay in regular communication with residents about the redevelopment plans and communicate to residents what programs they are eligible for during relocation, including the Tenant Assistance Fund. Our Commission also made a point to ask the developer to work with neighboring properties that provide comprehensive resident services, so properties that have nonprofit affordable housing providers owning them that are typically offered at affordable housing properties, since we will have 22 committed affordable units at the site, which is quite a lot. And the Commission encouraged the applicant to implement an eviction prevention program at the property and work with CAF residents to ensure they feel comfortable and empowered in the newly-redeveloped property, especially since there's going to be a lot more market rate residents at the property. We wanted to make sure that the applicant does as much as they can to ensure that the CAF residents don't feel like this is no longer their space in their home and that they have just as much of a say and voice in what happens to the property and its management moving forward. So thank you for your consideration and support of Affordable Housing in Arlington.
Thank you, Mr. Macbeth. And then is there anyone here from the Transportation Commission, Madam Clerk?
No.
No, we do not. Okay, I think they did unanimously.
I'm sorry. Do you know?
Sure.
We heard the Transportation Committee's, Commission's report at our Planning Commission meeting, so they supported it unanimously as well. Much of that, their conversation focused on the fact that while no bus routes currently serve the site specifically, there is an area designated for a bus shelter that can be put in, you know, should bus routes return to serving the site, there is a place for a bus shelter.
That's good, because there'll be a lot of people there that might want to take the bus.
Yes. So as those needs evolve. But yeah, they were supportive.
Great. Thank you very much. All right, so I think that's about all of our commissions, and thank you, Ms. Steinberger, for pinch hitting for Transportation. Appreciate it. And I think that brings us to our public testimony. Do we have any public speakers on this item, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we do. Our first speaker is Jane Green, followed by John Musso.
Okay, Ms. Green.
Hello. Happy New Year, everyone. Just raise it up a little bit. Congratulations to the new members. Happy New Year to everyone else. I am here speaking for the Alliance for Housing Solutions, which would like to express its support for the redevelopment of the proposal at the Red Lion Inn and the adjacent properties. And I personally, as a resident of Radnor Fort Meyer Heights, I'm very excited for this project. As we've heard, thanks to the Special Affordable Housing Protection District, all 28 market-rate affordable units in their combined sizes will be replaced on a bedroom-for-bedroom basis for a total of 22 new committed affordable units. And as we've heard, this includes an additional 19 family-sized affordable units, which is incredible opportunity in the Roslin area. We've also heard that there will be this Tenant Assistance Fund that will be established for vulnerable residents who will be eligible for relocation assistance during this reconstruction, and they can have the opportunity to return to the newly-constructed building. We've heard that the new building will have many green features and will offer outdoor and community spaces for all residents to enjoy. And on top of all of that, the Roslin area will welcome over 400 new housing units to the overall supply in this high-opportunity, transit-rich neighborhood. So the Alliance for Housing Solutions believes that this redevelopment is a win-win-win for Arlington and our low-income neighbors and the Radnor Fort Meyer Heights community. I want to especially drive home the point that density is making all of this happen without any cost to the Arlington taxpayers. Density is a magical tool, and we should look for more opportunities to use density to transform older market-rate affordable apartments into new buildings with onsite affordable, committed affordable units. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. The next speaker, Mr. Musso.
Our next speaker is John Musso, followed by Adam Theo.
Good morning, members of the County Board. John Musso, Government Affairs Manager at the Arlington Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of the Arlington Chamber, I would like to express our strong support for the development project, and we urge the County Board to vote to adopt. This project is a really robust transformation of an existing site of an Adrian Motel and two garden apartments, generating, as mentioned before, a net of more than 410 brand-new dwelling units, of which 24 committed affordable units, providing the exact same amount of bedrooms and also in a configuration that is in short supply right now in Arlington, more two- and three-bedroom apartments for families. We additionally believe that this project would create a much better streetscape for not just the residents of this new building, but also for all the residents of Radnor Fort Meyer Heights, Roslin, and much of the Roslin-Boston corridor as a whole. The Arlington Chamber always strongly believes in smart development, particularly along transit-rich corridors such as this, a very connected corridor close to the Roslin Metro Station Bus and Bike Trail. So we think this would be a huge net positive for the area and for the county, so we urge the County Board to adopt. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Musso.
Our next speaker is Adam Theo, followed by Bernie Byrne.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Adam Theo with UMBZ of Northern Virginia. I apologize for the casual attire this morning. My original plan was to head down to Crystal City to help friends of Mount Vernon Trail do some snow removal, but the Arlington buses, 42 and 77, did not agree with that plan, so I decided to come here and advocate for housing instead. With the Red Lion Site Plan with 446 units, 418 net new units, and 22 of them being committed affordable units, it is an excellent, much-needed site, development for Arlington and for Roslin. Every unit, especially the three-bedroom units, is much-needed. Thank you. Space for the future Arlington Boulevard Trail improvements are wonderful. I am looking forward to a new, improved Arlington Boulevard Trail all the way down, especially to where I live, on Pershing Drive, that will be much looked forward to in a few years. It's a beautiful building, and the new trees and landscaping will be a great addition to a stretch of Arlington Boulevard that isn't the most visually pleasant or green right now. My only issue with it is no pedestrian access on the north side facing Hillside Park due to adjacent condo concerns. Now, some comments made to the Transportation Commission, which I serve on, but not in that official capacity right now, indicate that that can be added in the future. I hope that the members on the County Board will verify that fact before voting on it. It would be great for the residents of the new development to be able to easily access the Hillside Park on the north side. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bernie Byrne, followed by Leslie Arminsky.
Mr. Byrne.
Please do not approve this project until the applicant resolves the following deficiencies regarding its plant lists and relative lack of biophilia. This site plan contains plant lists that show the species of shrubs, perennials, and ground covers. However, some of the plants are not native to this area. They may become invasive and may not feed native pollinators. They don't conform to the county board's 2017 Monarch pledge, which encourages residents and developers to plant milkweed and other native nectar plants that feed monarch butterflies and other pollinators. Many plants are wind-pollinated grasses and sedges. These don't produce nectar. Butterflies, Boston honeybird birds feed only on nectar. Some are cultivars. Many of these don't feed pollinators. Their flowers are sterile or deformed. The list contains butterfly weed, Eschelepsis tuberosa, which is a milkweed. However, this is the wrong milkweed. Monarch lay few plant eggs on this plant. There is no common milkweed, Eschelepsis cereaca. This is probably the most important point. This is the only plant on which monarch butterflies prefer when laying eggs, and which survives well in Northern Virginia. The common milkweed is one of the most important food plants for monarch butterflies in the Northeast United States. This is widely recognized. The applicant needs to replace butterfly weed with common milkweed. I have sent detailed comments about the plant list deficiencies to the applicant, but they have not responded to my comments. Despite the applicant's claims, there is actually very little biophilia. There is no green roof with plantings that feed pollinators. Flowering native vines don't hang from the roof, terraces and courtyards, or climb on trellises. These are missing. The streetscape, terraces, courtyards, rooftop observation deck, pool deck, do not contain, all contain too much pavement. All need planting boxes and tree tracts with flowering plants. There are some, but not many. The building lacks setbacks that can contain plantings. Again, where are they? I have objected to these, to these at the Site Plan Review Committee meetings, at the Planning Committee meeting, but have received no responses at those meetings. They say it's all nice, but it really isn't. Recently, the National County Planning Commission developed a plant list, a landscape plan that gives guidance for what you should do, what plants, what kind of milkweed. As a result, they are now receiving much better applications, and the National Park Service, and all the federal properties you'll see around here, and both currently in D.C., are having much better landscape plans than Arlington is seeing. Arlington needs this. I've informed the county manager about this. The county manager said nothing, and this is why Arlington is nothing like Washington, D.C.'s, at least their federal properties and related properties. Think about this. It's a major lack, and this project is an example of this, and you won't do anything about it.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne.
Our next speaker is Leslie Arminsky, followed by Stuart Stein.
Good morning. My name is Leslie Arminsky. Upfront, I'm a member of the Belvedere Board and Radnor Fort Meyer Heights Civic Association, but the views I'm expressing today are purely my own. I became aware of the Red Lion Project when I approached, when I was approached by David Orr almost exactly two years ago, right over here, after testifying on the Wendy's site. Since that time, the Belvedere has had numerous collegial conversations with representatives of Orr Partners and their legal counsel, Nick Cummings. I thank the Orr team for taking the time to work through a number of issues. I also thank Adam Watson of County Staff and SPR's Chair, Nia Bagley, and Co-Chair Eric Burkey for the taking time to meet with Belvedere representatives. The Belvedere's safety concerns regarding pedestrian vehicle interactions were allayed with the agreement to keep access to the Red Lion site off of the Belvedere driveway easement, as was the case in 2019, as was the case when it was litigated in 2006, and as it was the case in 1986, when the original easement agreement was signed. Other negotiations on various topics remain, and I trust they will be successfully resolved before construction begins. In summary, my interactions with the development team, staff, and the SPRC is one of the better ones, maybe in the top two than which I have ever participated. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stein.
Our last speaker is Stuart Stein.
Hello. I'm here today on behalf of the Radnor Fort Meyer Heights Civic Association. Our first concern is for our neighbors that will be displaced by this project. We were very happy to see that the developer was concerned about them and interested in helping to give them every opportunity to live in the new building. I believe very strongly that the current residents of market-affordable units should not have to rely on the kindness of the developer or to be lucky enough to get a developer that cares, such as this one. For years, I've asked the county to guarantee the ability of current residents to return at the rate that they left, especially when bonuses are involved. With so few residents remaining, there is no reason that each and every one of them should not be given the opportunity, even if they don't fit fully in to the CAF guidelines. It's not just about units, it's about people. It's about my neighbors, your neighbors. Staff has been working with the developer to modify guidelines and try and provide for the current resident. We greatly appreciate this. If there is a problem with too little subsidy, then perhaps it is time for the county to do its part. Maybe something can be done with some of the base contributions that have been collected over the years to make sure that no Arlington County citizens are sacrificed in the name of the very affordable housing that they currently live in. I want, once again, to thank the developer for their concern and their efforts to prevent the displacement of my neighbors. If we can't act as a county where, if we can't work with a willing and caring developer to help a small group of Arlingtonians who are being impacted by a development, then when will we be able to do so? There has been a change in the bedroom mix to produce an additional three-bedroom unit. We welcome this addition to the stock of affordable family-size units, but our greatest concern still remains that any such adjustment should not interfere with the ability of current one-bedroom residents to return to the new building. Over the years, I've been told it is not the business of various entities, Planning Commission, Housing Commission, Tenant Landlord, or County Board. I've been so very happy to see the interest expressed by housing. I've been so very happy to see the interest expressed by housing and planning, and to a great extent by Adam and the county staff. I hope that you will support their efforts and see to it that this is not a one-time solution. I also wanted to express our support for the Belvedere in their concerns and discussions over this whole time on this project. In addition, we believe that parking is insufficient for the scale of this project. I know many would prefer even less, and I'm pretty sure the current amount of parking is due to county policy, not the insistence of the developer. And on a personal note, I want to personally express that I wish there were more EV spots, certainly more EV-ready spots. In all cases, I hope infrastructure should not preclude the future implementation of EV on a broad scale. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Any other speakers, Madam Clerk?
That concludes our public speakers for this item.
Thank you. Conversation is now with the board. Colleagues, this is a relatively non-controversial topic. I think maybe we could start with a motion, and then I'll see. I think we probably have a number of questions and some discussion, but why don't we start with a motion? Ms. Cunningham?
I move that the board adopt the county manager's recommendation for Agenda Item 30A, as reflected in the board report dated January 20, 2024, to adopt the GLUP Amendment Resolution, rezoning ordinance, and site plan amendment ordinance as shown in the attachments to said board report. Additionally, I move the board adopt the county manager's recommendation for Agenda Item 30B, as reflected in the board report dated January 20, 2024, to adopt the ordinance of vacation attached to said board report, and to authorize the Real Estate Bureau chief to execute on behalf of the board the deed of vacation and any other documents necessary to effectuate the ordinance of vacation, subject to approval of all documents as to form by the county attorney.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded by Mr. DeFranti. Colleagues, questions? Who would like to get us started? I imagine there are a few questions, but maybe Ms. Cunningham, I don't know if you want to speak to your motion to get started?
Sure. Be happy to. It is exciting to have a project come forward with nearly unanimous support, but a lot of positive feedback in and around the community. So I really want to applaud everyone who's been involved in bringing forward concerns and to the applicant for hearing those concerns and, in large part, moving through them. It's a great example of our processes actually working, so it warms the heart. I have a couple of questions. First, on -- I think there was a question from the Belvedere Condo Association as to the sheeting and shoring and excavation details. Has that been addressed, or is that underway? I think they just want to make sure that they are comfortable.
We're going to work collaboratively. I'm David Orr, sorry, Orr Partners. We are going to work collaboratively with them, assuming things go well today, in the development of the sheeting and shoring plans, the construction plans overall. We've made that commitment to work with them.
Perfect. Okay, great. And then I would just want to raise up C2E2's thoughtful comments. I think that we are continuing as a -- we good?
Yeah.
As a country and as a community to try to lean into the climate needs that we have. And I think, especially with an applicant that is celebrated as being supportive, I think we want to push ourselves going forward as we look at green building laws, as we look at incentives for our developers to really push forward on the electrification further. So I'll look forward to feedback from each of you on how we can do that better. And then finally, just want to highlight, this is a great example of preserving our market-rate affordable units, and that has got to be a huge priority for us as a community. Affordability has a whole lot of different levers we can pull, but preserving the folks that already live here, that are paying a reasonable amount as we move forward with redevelopment, is super crucial. So I applaud you guys for figuring that out at no expense to the county, even better, and invite all of us to keep pushing on that as we move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Ms. Court, did you have something you needed to add?
Yes, I'm sorry. Just a slight oversight on my part when drafting the motion. The date of the board report is actually January 16, not January 20, so I just wanted to make sure that we correct that.
All right.
You don't have to read it again. I just put this on the record that there's that correction.
Yep. Thank you for that correction and duly noted by our clerk, I believe. I think we are good to go. And I'm just going to work my way down the table here. I think -- go ahead, Mr. DeFranti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is for staff. Applicant may be able to add. I used to live close, and so I took the 38 bus and I walked over to the courthouse. In August, it was a different walk than in December, for sure. And so I'm just -- do I understand right, it's sort of equidistant from the Roslin Metro and the courthouse metro, and then the buses would be -- we have a couple of routes that go down through that area that I have taken, but less often than the 38 Metro bus. Is there a way to speak to -- do I kind of have the right walks that you're doing? You know, quarter mile over to Wilson and then a little longer to courthouse and Roslin. Can you speak a little bit to the transportation that is already there, keeping in mind Chair Steinberger's point about perhaps additional -- and so I don't know, Mr. Watson, Ms. Kim?
It's Ms. Kim. Sure. Hi. Jane Kim with DES. It is about equidistant, kind of as the crow flies, from Roslin and courthouse. I think depending on if you want to walk up or downhill may determine which Metro stop you want to go to. I can speak a little bit to the existing or the previously existing bus route that did come through for Vex Drive. It was the 4A route, which was discontinued a couple of years ago, and we have been in talks with our transit staff, who works with Womata, in seeing if there are plans to bring that route back. And I think there are currently tentative projections for it coming back in the future, but with no firm date or timeline. And so that's why the condition in the site plan condition language is written, so that if it is back in use by the time construction begins, they will incorporate a shelter on site. And so we hope that if the route exists, we can provide an additional amenity on-site for residents and nearby neighbors. And kind of the other access is probably on, as you mentioned, Wilson and some of the other nearby streets. And it's not -- it is within, I think, a reasonable distance to walk to the arterials that contain our bus routes.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate the 4A comments. We have shorter-term existential questions that we're working on with respect to metro. That's really my only question. I have like two -- I will have two closing comments, but I think maybe go down the line and then -- or unless you want me to go now, Madam Chair.
No, it sounds like a plan. Why don't we continue down, and we'll come back for closing comments. Mr. Karen Tonas, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I align with my colleagues and commending everybody who worked to bring this to so far, Mr. Orr and our staff, and the amazing work that SPRC has done. So I'm really pleased to see that. I have a question that is just for my edification here, because the -- so the affordable housing calculation. I commend you for going and thank you for going bedroom-to-bedroom counting that. But there is at some point a calculation that says, so here is a three-bedroom instead of, was it three one-bedrooms? And in my mind, this is equivalent in bedrooms, obviously, and it accommodates a family, which is a need and really a desirable outcome. But at the same time, it's, you know, it's two kitchens, probably less, and it's also maybe a couple of bathrooms or less, et cetera. So it's a little bit less expensive, in my mind, to produce a three-bedroom than to produce three. So does this differential count somewhere as still a benefit, or is it not in the calculation?
Ryan Orr, hello. How are you? Our calculation centered around the rents, and so we calculate what a market rent would be and what an affordable rent would be based off of Arlington County's website and the HUD guidelines, et cetera. So we mostly focused on that and the differential, and we just calculated, you know, that differential and understood, you know, what would work financially for us. So it's mostly focused around the rent differential.
Okay. So is that for our staff relevant at any case, or how do we approach? Because we haven't, you know, worked with this kind of benefit for quite a while, right? The last one was in 2008 of this type.
Yeah, correct. The last time around was the 2019 approval. I would just say, I think the housing component of this project in and of itself, you know, was comprised, would have comprised, all the bonus density necessary to earn. So I think they're actually doing more than they needed to in terms of value already. But I would also welcome Melissa Danowski's take on this. She's with our housing division, and she's on the line as well. I don't know if she has thoughts about the one-bedrooms versus the three-bedrooms and the value there.
Ms. Danowski.
Thank you so much. Melissa Danowski in the Housing Division. I do know that the -- in terms of the affordable housing program, that we certainly welcome the three-bedroom units. And in addition, in the past, for SHPD contributions, the vast majority of them have replaced on a bedroom-for-bedroom replacement. So from that perspective, we're very supportive of it, and also the additional three-bedroom, which are very, very hard to obtain in site plan projects.
Okay. I'm satisfied.
Thank you.
I just wanted to raise it because this is not a very common type of a deal under SHPD, so hasn't been used very often, so I wanted to understand how we value the contribution here exactly.
Thank you.
I have another question, just very, very short. One of the biggest benefits that we get as a community from this project is the undergrounding of utilities, which is not trivial there. In previous conversations, you valued that at $4.5 million, which is a significant contribution. And I know that it's very tricky there because you have three places of utilities. So the utilities now -- so where are they going to land? Is it on your side, or is it on the other side of Fairfax Drive? How is it going to be configured?
Yeah. So we are going to underground everything that's on our frontage, and then because of the way the system works, there is certain poles that we have to go up Arlington Boulevard beyond our site in front of the inner Roslin. We have to go up that direction and attach to a pole up there and underground everything in between. And then the other thing we're doing is we're boring underneath Route 50, which is one of the biggest expenses, because there's a catenary line right now that carries over Route 50. That's also going to be undergrounded. So when you add all this up, it's $4.5 million. It's an enormous expense.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coffey.
Thank you. What a joy for this to be the first site plan I get to vote on. I assume it shall set the tone for all the others that go forward.
We hope. I'm going to work on that.
I, you know, I have to say, I've heard such positive things. You know, I'm just getting briefed on all of this kind of parachuting in at the end, but it's great to hear that there are not massive issues coming before us. I think, you know, I'm excited about the addition of housing, just in general, but I would love to ask Ms. Steinberger if she could speak a little bit to the significance of the family-size units and why the planning commission asked for that and kind of how that change came about.
Sure. So I worked for a judge once who said, "If you don't ask, you don't get, so it never hurts to ask." So we asked. But traditionally, when -- so the planning commission as a body has been very focused on not just are we getting X number of affordable units, but looking at at what level of affordability. And that's why I raised the AMI percentage earlier, as the conversation point that I think is going to be coming up again and again. But it also means we're getting the right mix of units, because a lot of times we're getting from developers are a whole bunch of one-bedroom units, some two-bedroom units. And I am not recalling right now when we've really seen three-bedroom units, certainly not more than one three-bedroom unit, offered as a community benefit for affordable housing on a site plan. So it's very significant from that perspective, and I know that there are some unique elements to this project with how we're replacing, you know, units bedroom-for-bedroom from a displacement purpose perspective. But it really -- we don't see that mix of units. And this was an opportunity where if we could get an additional three-bedroom unit, it seemed, you know, we had what seemed to be a very willing partner in the developer, so thanks. And we, you know, this was a moment where we could make that ask and really set the stage for these are things that this is what the planning commission is going to be looking for going forward. And if we don't force the conversation now and make it the standard, then, you know, developers are smart enough that if they see we're asking the same questions every time a site plan is coming before us, they're going to start coming prepared with better answers and knowing that we're going to make the same comments when I or one of my colleagues is, you know, at this meeting. So it's in everyone's best interest that we be heading in the same direction in that regard, and I very much appreciate, you know, Orr Properties being a strong partner in that regard, you know, so we can very quickly reach this accommodation. And, you know, I'm satisfied. Did that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Okay, great.
I think the only other thing that I would love to ask Orr Partners to speak to is the efforts you've already put in when it comes to contacting the current tenants and coming up with that tenant relocation plan.
Yeah, thank you. So what's defined this project for two years now is the strength of its community involvement. I want to pay tribute and compliments to Leslie Arminsky and to Stuart Stein, who have been there with us, our biggest, two biggest civic associations, as well as Carmen at Park Roslin. They have been with us step by step. They've been at every meeting. And what resonated from the community is empathy and compassion for our existing market-rate affordable tenants, and that was put on the table day one, resonated with us, and so we equally applied empathy and compassion to those tenants. My son Tyler, who's on the phone, and my son Ryan, we visited each one of those tenants and made outreach to them early on. We've not been enforcing leases. We have worked very diligently at not having displacement. During one of our Housing Commission hearings, Mr. Stein suggested, is there a way where we can change the benchmark for people who might be coming back, that they can be -- it'd be easier for them to qualify? And we've agreed to raise the standard to 80% for that, so if they -- their income has gone up, they still can come back in. So we've, you know, we've worked collaboratively with this community, and I think the hallmark of this project, that we've arrived at, a really strong anti-displacement program, that we're working very diligently to get these people back in, as well as you can see the strength of our affordable housing mix and balance. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all for me.
Okay, great. Thank you. I had just a couple of questions on the biophilia. Love that canopy. I think that's going to be great. Can't wait to see that. And then bird-friendly glass. I'm delighted you're doing bird-friendly glass over the whole building. I ask about bird-friendly glass most of the time, and I generally get told, we're only doing a few levels because it's too expensive. Would you like to talk about how expensive it -- I mean, is it -- you guys are managing to do it. I just would like to know that for the future, because I really think we could do better on bird-friendly glass.
Chris Gordon with KGD Architecture.
Yeah.
I don't know the actual cost differential. It is in the glass -- the glazing itself has sort of a ceramic frit in the production of the glass. Since it's insulated, it's two panes of glass, so on one of the inner panes of glass, it has a ceramic frit, is what we call it. It does add cost to the glazing, to have that pattern put on it. Audubon recommendations for the height of the glass is only to, I believe it's 35 to 60 feet, somewhere in that range, so you don't have to continue it all the way up on larger structures or taller structures. So we're proposing to use that, those standards, for the bird-friendly glass on the project.
That's great. Thank you. I think I need to talk to Audubon. At least other people tell me I do. I'm a member. We'll see if that carries any weight.
Sure.
Thank you. And then this may also be for you, Mr. Horton. Mr. Byrne always comes to talk to us about monarch butterflies and milkweed. Would you like to talk about that a little bit? I, too, am concerned about the butterflies. We did sign this agreement, and I think there's some disagreement about what milkweed works for monarch butterflies.
I have a great deal of respect for-- I have a great deal of respect for Dr. Byrne, and we'll have our landscape architect talk a little bit more thoroughly about the types of planting we have.
That would be great. Thank you. Yeah, and if you want to address the invasive species as well, that's good, and the red light should be on. Yes, you're good now. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Yoli from Sweden. We are the landscape architect on this project. I don't know if it's helpful to pull out our slide. We have prepared a supporting slide with all the plant palettes, and we organized into native or native cultivars. So most of the plants we proposed are native or native cultivars, if not native to Virginia. That will be the last, very last slide of this deck.
We're getting there.
There's some lag to all this.
Is that what you're looking for?
Actually, it will have to go to, all the way to the very end. I think we have like 27 slides.
We came very well-prepared.
Maybe two, well. If you can't get to this slide, that's okay. We can.
We'll find it.
All right. You could go ahead and talk while they're finding the slide if that's okay.
Yeah, so, yes, we worked closely with the county. We adapted, that was the slide I was going to show. Yeah, so we adapted our plant palettes through different revisions of 4.1 to be majority. The majority of the plants proposed here, as you can see, are native to Virginia or native cultivars. We do have a few plants that are native, not to Virginia, but native to East Coast. And we are revising our plant to be even more native in FLP and CEP, which will be reviewed by the county in the future.
I'll note, too, that Mr. Tyler Orr and I participated in meetings with Ms. Lee and her team as well, where we met with the Urban Forester and other members of the county's, you know, landscaping team generally to get ahead of these issues. Because obviously, they don't necessarily have to be resolved until a final landscape plan, but we were thinking about this actively throughout. It also, you know, was incorporated into a discussion of that canopy and how survivable the canopy would be and what we would be planning up there. So we tried to get ahead of everything, and we absolutely understand everything that Mr. Byrne shares at these meetings and are committed to, you know, accomplishing many of the same goals that he set out.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Yeah, and obviously, it's going to be a while before you're doing the plantings. So a lot of work, more work can be done. And I'm assuming native plants actually do better than the ones that are non-native because they're developed to grow here, which is very helpful. Thank you. That's very helpful. I think, are there any more questions? Are we ready for concluding comments? Concluding comments? All right. Why don't we start with the maker of the motion, Ms. Cunningham? We'll just work down the dais again. Ms. Cunningham.
Yeah, I would just like to reiterate appreciation to the whole community for bringing this forward. I know, I think Mr. Orr mentioned that we may not have the fastest process, but we have one of the best processes for getting community engagement in. And I'm thrilled that it has worked in this case. I would just like to close with continued focus on the housing affordability question. I think Mr. Karen Tonas raised exactly the same question I had raised earlier this week about what's the equivalence of a three-bedroom versus three one-bedrooms? And the reality is, it is, you know, less than 50% more rent for a three-bedroom than a one-bedroom. So I think right now, the market rates are like 2,200 roughly for a one-bedroom, 3,200 roughly for a three-bedroom. And I think to our housing team, I would invite your continued innovation and support and nudging of this board of how can we make it more affordable? Because the capital cost is a little less for a three-bedroom than a one-bedroom, roughly speaking, for three one-bedrooms. But the rents are different. And so can we leverage that for our community to have more three, four, or five bedrooms that are shared? And what will it take to do that? So more to come.
Okay, thank you. Mr. DiFranti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Theo and Ms. Green spoke. This is 418 net new dwellings. If you believe that we have a housing supply shortage, this is a project for you. It's super important. Happy to support it. On climate, Ms. McIntyre did listen to your comments. In particular, I hope this to be one of the final 20% projects that I look to for the respect of the 20, with respect to the incentive. I do think that 24% should be our guiding light going forward. I do think that these units, if we do need housing supply, if these units are not there, they might be in a place where transportation led to a lot of climate use. So I do think this is transportation-oriented development and beneficial for our climate. Appreciate the nuance and the full breadth of your comments, Ms. McIntyre. Mr. Orr and team, Mr.s Orr and team, just a big thank you for listening and engaging. As I looked at, thought about this project earlier this week, I thought how eager I am for it to be built because we did have the 2019 effort. But the pavement surrounding the buildings is not bucolic. It's not particularly beautiful. This is an opportunity. And just very grateful for your listening and engaging with our community, as well as our community coming and engaging here. You just don't usually hear such thoughtful comments in support of a project, always from nearby neighbors. And so thank you, Mr. Stein, Mr. Arminski, for coming in. Great project. Happy to support it.
Thank you. Mr. Karen Tonas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am, of course, supportive of the motion. This is a great project. And if I go down very quickly on the merits, housing, delivery, just the 400-plus units, it's no, you know, secret that I would have loved to see a far bigger building there. I mean, just look the neighborhood of this. I understand the feasibility of this right now because of the bedrock that's very difficult to deal with and very expensive to deal with. It's kind of interesting that the, you know, the orange line just passes just behind the building. It's underneath Sixth Street. The affordable housing that we're getting from that and the, I mean, the implicit preservation of market-rate affordable housing plus the tenant relocation is, for me, a very convincing good outcome here. I particularly like the urbanism and the transit-oriented development setting of the building. I like to see Arlington Boulevard to be treated like that. Finally, this is more of a boulevard and not just a traffic sewer that goes through literally the neighborhoods of thousands of people. We need to think about that. The contribution on infrastructure that you are making there just sets a very different tone in terms of what we expect to see on the urban frontage on this Arlington Boulevard. We haven't done so much, but as of lately, we have been doing far more. Incidentally, across the street, there is one of the oldest high-rises in Arlington, maybe the oldest one, 1500 Arlington Boulevard, which, for those who are interested in preserving, you know, carbon, embodied carbon, this is one of the best projects I've ever seen in our community. Biophilia, we're doing, we're making progress. I applaud you for what I've seen there. I still think that we can do more, and we should be, you know, focused on a little bit more. But I am still very, very pleased to see what you have been proposing. And on climate, okay. It's not secret that I will ask you again and again and again to think twice whether you want to install gas in this building. I still think that with the current market available technology, it's not a stretch to replace at least the furnace with something that is more efficient and it's based on, and it's electric. I think this is, we are at a point where this should be feasible. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Karen Tonas. Ms. Coffey.
Thank you. I'm not sure how much on the merits I can say that our colleagues have not already said, but I really do want to focus on a word that's come up a number of times here, which is partnership and really the precedent-setting level of communication and interaction. I think it's so important to see that we can work on these larger-scale development projects while pulling together a vast array of priorities, really working to make sure that all of those are seen together in this project, getting to yes, getting everyone involved, and to a point where they feel comfortable with the project. As we move forward as a community, we really do need to embody that in more and more of our projects. And so I think this is important to me to really just highlight that as we develop, you know, it doesn't have to be a tense relationship. It can really be a partnership. And I think that that is laudable. And in addition to the literal benefits that this project is going to bring to our community, I think the tone setting that has come out of this is really important for our community as well.
Thank you. Right, almost everything's been said. We've not all said it, but we all say it a little differently. And I wonder if we could put up, if we could find a slide 13 from our presentation? That's the before and the after, which to me, you know, one picture's worth a thousand words kind of says it all. So the first picture, hopefully, we'll pull it up. You know, didn't look very inviting. It didn't help. It was all monochromatic dark. But the change really makes a difference and shows how much collaboration really can do. And I picked up a little bit, Ms. Steinberg, I was thinking the same thing, that developers should start to pick up, we're going to ask the same questions over and over and over again, so maybe you should have the answers. And I think, and so if developers and others in the community are paying attention, look what collaboration can do. It's just amazing, and it's so much better. The project's better. Everybody's feeling better. We're doing things for the community. I think it's just great and want to thank you for being such good partners and such good, such good neighbors for us all. Thank you so much. And Mr. Orr, I was going to invite you to say a few comments if you'd like, and we're about to vote. I think you're going to be okay with this vote. Go ahead, if you've got any comments you'd like to make.
Just quickly, I just wanted to recognize that I will emphasize that the community involvement did make this project a better project. We've been building for 35 years here. I've never had a process like this. And comments from people like Leo Sarley and Eric Burkey and Nea Bagley, all the way through the process, were very positive, very helpful, and we do have a better project for it, and we thank everybody for that.
Thank you so much, yeah. We've come a long way in the last 12 years I've been on the board. It used to be a pretty antagonistic process. This is great. And then just to add a little note of, it's not antagonism, but a little disagreement. I'm not sure I totally agree with Mr. Karen Tonas that we should go all electric. Sometimes a little gas backup is not a bad thing, and I think gas can be actually fairly kind to the environment if you're doing some other things. So I, we're a little torn on that. We don't agree totally. That's it. I think we're ready to vote. All in favor of the motion before us, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes 5-0. We're moving forward. Thank you so much. Can't wait to see this building, especially that canopy. Looking forward to it. All right? Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. All right, I think we've got one more agenda item, if I am remembering correctly. Madam Clerk, would you like to call the next, and hopefully, I think it's the final item?
Apologies. Just one moment.
I'm going to do that, too.
Our next item is item number 31, which is a use permit review for a commercial parking lot located at 1425 North Quincy Street.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With me for the staff presentation is Aaron Schreiber of CPHD. Over to you, Mr. Schreiber.
All right. Mr. Schreiber.
Good afternoon. Looks like we just passed the threshold. Give me a moment while I pull up this slide, brief slide presentation.
Okay. The computer might be cold.
Yeah, it is cold back there. So good afternoon again. My name is Aaron Schreiber with the Planning Division in the Department of Community Planning, Housing and Development. I'm here today to present the manager's recommendation for the review of a use permit for a commercial parking lot for art bus parking spaces at a property at 1425 North Quincy Street. Again, this is a review of an approved use permit, and I'll provide some background information for everybody. The property, again, is located at 1425 North Quincy Street. This image here shows the six-acre property that was acquired by the county in 2017. The property does include four individual buildings that are referred to as, whoops. I'm sorry, my slides are not moving forward. I apologize. I will try and exit.
That's all right. Try again. I think all the equipment is cold.
Okay, there we go.
Thank you.
So this is the property. Again, it's a six-acre property located in the southeastern quadrant of where Quincy Street crosses over Interstate 66. And here, I provided this image to show you the four buildings that the county owns and uses for various public purposes, supporting the Department of Environmental Services, as well as the Fire Department and the Police Department. Specifically, this use permit occurs on the east and west sides of the Quincy II building here, and I've clouded the two areas. The use permit is specifically for the storage of up to 29 art bus parking spaces. This was approved as a temporary commercial parking lot to occur or to exist here for no longer than a period at December 31, 2025. But as you can see here from this image, the buses are parked on either side of the Quincy II building. They are accessed directly from North Quincy Street, and they circulate through the two areas and then back out onto Quincy Street. These 29 buses do support art routes in the northern portion of the county. Again, it's a temporary facility while the permanent operations and maintenance facility is under construction on Sherlington Road. A little bit more background, the property, it is split-zoned. It is split-zoned between the CO 1.0, the CM, and the M1 districts. And very importantly, the commercial parking lot does occur entirely on the M1 portion of the property, and this is a portion along Interstate 66. From a GLUP designation perspective, the property is designated for low residential use, but it's also indicated as under public ownership. And then it is identified on the public facilities map, which is a component of the general land use plan, and it is identified for public owner, or as public ownership, and specifically identified as the E7 operations element, and that is indicating the Quincy 1 through 4 buildings. This element, this public facilities map, was adopted by the county board in February of 2020. And then again, specifically on the use, again, it occurs on the M1 portion of the property. Commercial parking lots are allowed in the M1 district. It's interesting, they're both allowed as a use permitted by right and a use that requires a use permit. In this case, the reason why we have a use permit is because the parking, it does not accommodate more than 50 parking spaces, but it does occur on an area greater than 20,000 square feet, and that's what required the use permit. And the commercial parking use was determined by the zoning administrator as the appropriate use for this, thus why the use permit was required. This image shows the approved layout with the use permit. And again, it does allocate parking on the east and west sides of the Quincy II building. And you can see that the area is fenced in order to secure that area, and the site has been striped accordingly to allow for storage and access through the property. Here are two images of the property that I took while visiting the site. Do note the fencing confining this area in the image on the right. That black fabric, that is an acoustical fabric, which is installed on the fence as was required by the use permit conditions and as a way to help mitigate some of the noise that may stem from this use and could have an impact on the adjacent residential uses. This image shows the five use permit conditions that were approved with the use permit in May of 2022. And I'll briefly just go through these because this is one of the things that we assessed during our review. The first condition does require that the use operate in compliance with all applicable codes and ordinances, and that they receive all appropriate permits as required to operate the use. The applicant did receive a certificate of occupancy in June of 2022, following the county board's approval. We also inspected the property with our partners in inspection services and zoning, and we can confirm that there have been no identified violations of any applicable codes or ordinances or these use permit conditions. The second condition does require that the applicant provide and maintain updated liaison contact information with the Boston, Virginia Square Civic Association, as well as the Cherrydale Citizens Association, and that also they have annual meetings with materials provided to the public, as well as the zoning administrator. The meeting in 2023 occurred at the end of November. Condition number three does require that the use occur entirely on the M1 zone portion of the property, which it does. of the property, which it does. The fourth condition does state the temporary nature of the use permit, such that it can exist no longer than December 31, 2025, unless renewed by the County Board. And then the fifth item required the applicant to install the acoustical barrier on the fence on the eastern portion of the site, which the previous image shows that they have complied with that. Since we have found in our review of this that the use is operating in compliance with the adopted conditions, as well as all applicable codes and ordinances, the county manager recommends renewal of the use permit with a review and one year of January 2025. I'd be happy to answer any questions following further presentations and discussion.
Thank you. I think we're over to the applicant, which is also Arlington County. Mr. May.
Okay. Well, good afternoon. Yes, George May from DES Facilities and Engineering, and I'm joined by Ms. Rivers from DES Transit Bureau, and we wish to describe how we are working at the site to meet the terms of the use permit. Can you put the slides up? Ah, thank you. All right. Okay, next? Okay. What we'll cover is, as Mr. Schreiber described, how we are using the use permit for our parking, and we'll describe some of our current operations at the site, and our response to community concerns that we've heard during this operating period, and other activities we'll be doing that happened at the site during 2024. Mr. Schreiber has already well-described the art bus parking and uses. Building 2 between the two parking lots is where our dispatch staff are worked to, when they send the buses out on their routes on a daily basis. And the other activities are noteworthy. Primarily, the building at the far right, Quincy 4, is one where we do have some activities for various police and fire department training, as well as storing some of the public health equipment we used during the COVID inoculation period. Next? Next? Okay. Ms. Rivers will talk more about the changes we've made in improving the flexibility in the operation of the art buses, in both to reduce noise and to prepare for their dispatch. The other things worth noting is, last year, we completed replacement of a very aged fence on the south boundary and put in the landscaping there to improve the site's appearance.
Thank you. The bus parking, you can go back one, please. Thank you. So we made some modifications on the east lot in changing the swing gate to reduce the amount of backing the buses would have to do as it's preparing to go out in the morning or in the afternoon. Additionally, we've moved all of our federally mandated pre-trip, safety pre-trip inspections to the front lot, which is the west lot, in order for that to take place. In the pre-trip procedures, the buses have to be idled in order to have the air pressure raised to a point where the bus operator gets to check brakes, lights, doors, even the kneeling feature of the vehicle. So the idle time is required in order for that bus to be deemed safe for vehicle readiness. Next slide. And our responsive to community concerns, and then the reason why I mentioned the idle, we had gotten two notifications with regards to the amount of idling that had happened during this past year through the Department of Environmental Quality, and we shared with them our procedures of having a 10-minute idle time. However, there will be times in which that period would be exceeded during extremely cold weather, during extremely hot weather. Buses are required to idle longer than the 10 minutes. However, we have put in place mitigation procedures that we shared with DEQ and have satisfied their concerns. And also, we do not operate out of that facility on the weekends. It's strictly a Monday-through-Friday operation. The only movement that you'll really see after Friday evening is Sunday, late Sunday afternoon, as buses are being prepared for Monday morning pullout. And I think I've covered also the rerouting the buses to back up. Also, I'll just mention, during our most recent meeting with the community, there were concerns even about the Fire Department, and the same with their vehicles with regards to backing and moving, and in order to minimize the noise, the Fire Department is providing advance notice to the community to let them know of work that is going on there. And also mentioned, Mr. May mentioned the landscaping and buffer maintenance that has happened as well.
Okay, well, what's planned for 2024 as we continue to operate the site? We'll be doing regular emergency maintenance on the buildings and the grounds as the need occurs, and as a way of information, on Monday, the water sewer streets folks will be working on the area close to the I-66 fence between Buildings 3 and 4 to replace some collapsing sewer line. There will be some heavy equipment operating there for about three days. The betterments for the buildings on the site are ongoing affair. We are in the process of phased replacement of the HVAC units on the four buildings, as well as the roof replacements. And as I mentioned, Building 4 will be continued to be used for some fire and police training. And as Ms. Rivers mentioned, when the Fire Department mobilizes for events like the Army 10-miler and the Marine Corps Marathon, they start up their equipment fairly early in the morning to stage them for the event. And we will be continuing with the dispatch of the buses from Quincy while the completion of the new maintenance facility in Green Valley is being completed, and it is being commissioned and readied by the transit operating staff to support maintenance operations. And once that is done, we will no longer be using the leased facility in Alexandria. Our commitment to engagement with the Quincy neighbors continues, and the community liaison staff shown on this slide are the contact people who respond to the community questions and maintain our website with current information. As you heard, we had our community meeting in November of this year, of '23, and we'll have another one towards the end of calendar '24. That concludes our presentation about how we're implementing the use permit, and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I believe we probably have some speakers on this. Madam Clerk, would you like to go ahead and call the speakers?
Yes, our first speaker is Robbie Woodson, followed by Ken Hughes.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the two new board members. Thank you for your time to speak on this particular issue. As a lifelong resident of Arlington, a third generation to be in the county, I can, my grandparents actually owned a farm on Fairfax Drive. I know that's hard to believe, but it did happen. And Libby may remember, I am a product of the public school system here also. Recently, my parents bought the home on North Nelson in 1972. They had rented three years prior. We were one of the older residents, and I took over the property about four years ago. And I continue to be a part of the community here in Arlington. With all that said, I do have a little bit of fear speaking, because the last group of people who came and spoke about this particular situation were sued by the county attorney later, and it was dropped. However, I do feel strongly in my constitutional rights as a voter, a citizen, and a member of this computer community and a taxpayer, to speak my mind about what I have witnessed and seen in the last year-plus as a result of this particular permit. Let me share a few thoughts. There was a covenant that was created back in the 80s as a result of building Q3 being used by a moving company and tractor trailers going up and down Nelson Street into a community with people playing, children playing, park, et cetera. It was a problem, that was why the dead end was closed. However, I will say, now I have seen more with your tenants and those that are currently being occupied on the Quincy property. I've seen more lights, more noise, more motion, more heavy equipment over the last year-plus. I also enjoy being woken up by the Fire Department at 3:00 a.m. with their lights, sirens, and the movement of a two-ton truck that then shakes the foundation of my house. And any of you are welcome to come stay in my guest room whenever they decide to practice their lights, sirens, because you will have a firsthand experience. As you can see from the pictures that I have submitted, you can see where some of this is taking place. This is specifically down in more of where the art bus is, but up further in the property where there is an existing covenant they will continue to activate and use, and it has been somewhat reduced. However, I would like to counter the previous testimony that the Fire Department has not alerted neighborhoods to any activity prior. With my last remaining, I ask that the covenant is upheld and that we don't continue these conversations for the next 40 years that I have been witnessing since the 80s. While it is viewed the art bus use is only temporary and should just be allowed, you continue to subject us all to things if you, as the county board member, live next to, you would not allow, which is loud noises, bright lights, continued beeping, and increased traffic. My second request is after upholding and enforcing the covenant is regarding the Quincy property in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Woodson. We do have your handout. Thank you so very much.
Our next speaker is Ken Hughes, followed by Moira Myers. Ken Hughes? Okay. Moira Myers?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
This is Mr. Hughes?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Yes, you can. Go ahead.
He's getting a little bit of feedback.
Yeah. Mr. Hughes, why don't you come back in again, perhaps, and we'll move on to the next speaker, and then you come back, we'll come back to you, Mr. Hughes, I promise. Is Moira Myers here?
And then you come back, we'll come back to you, Mr. Hughes, I promise. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, there's an echo of some sort we need to figure out. All right. Next.
Good afternoon. So Ms. Woodson shared some pictures and videos, and those are at the website quincy site.org for anybody who wants to see them, the actual operations and activities that are occurring in the covenant area. They are indeed occurring there. So first, welcome to the board, Ms. Coffey and Ms. Cunningham. Some of these comments apply to you, and most of them do not. But today I'm going to be speaking more about long-term planning, and I'd like to contrast our situation with the last action that you approved, the Red Lion property. There you had reviews and inputs by the transportation planning and housing commissions and neighbors and others. And in contrast with the Quincy site, and I'm kind of stating the obvious here, but it's just you and us, the nearest neighbors and the civic association. And in almost 10 years of county ownership, we have not benefited from, and do not benefit from, and do not anticipate benefiting from, similar review processes and oversight. And while the JFAC process provided considered guidance, a couple of you should remember that, you were on JFAC commissioners, provided considered guidance on the uses of the Quincy site, the county board and the county manager have effectively discarded it. Among that guidance was that the buses were not appropriate for the site. We anticipate that the county will continue to use the site in ways that cut off or minimize to the maximum extent any reviews by bodies that are not the manager, senior staff, and board. So you fully own and operate the site. You have decided what, if any, considerations and mitigations are provided to the nearest neighbors. You prioritize, or not, long-term planning and budget decisions. What our neighborhood has experienced in the last almost decade has been a failure in accountability and leadership. A failure in accountability and leadership. This could and should become a case study in how not to run accounting government and in considering your role, and in not considering your unique role as owners of the site and how your actions may affect neighbors. It's time for long-term planning on the site. We understand that the CIP actually does not include long-term planning. It's unfortunate, because all of you today have only been thinking about it through the lens of expediency, and there's so much opportunity for the site and where it is situated. I know that, Ms. Garvey, you've been interested in decking over I-66 super. Imagine if you and others had acted on that idea with community involvement. It might be something that would take decades, but it would have started a decade ago. And I know one of our members who couldn't be here today talked to you about that and laid out scenarios. So the choice is yours. You could continue the same path that you have been on, or you could work with us, and we actually have a reputation of working well with the county. You could work with us in a participatory and meaningful process. I repeat, it's about accountability and leadership. It would be nice to have more of it.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Myers.
We're going to try and see if...
Mr. Hughes? Yeah, we'll try Mr. Hughes again.
Okay.
All right, let's try again. Good.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, this is sounding much better.
Okay, thank you. Okay, my name is Ken Hughes. I live one block away from the site in question. I've lived at that, at my address, for 33 years. I want to thank the county board for giving me this opportunity to speak on this matter. My comments exclusively concern the bus idling, and while it appeared from county staff that this problem has been solved, with respect to county staff and the commission, the neighborhood is observing that, contrary to Virginia law, which says three minutes of idling, and whatever agreement came up with the Department of Environmental Quality, which said 10 minutes, we are observing up to 30 minutes and beyond on a routine basis. Obviously, this violation of Virginia law cannot be tolerated. There, in addition, the law's there for a reason, and we have pollution problems with the idling. The noise is obvious, I'm not going to go into detail on that. But addition, there are the tailhouse emissions, and while compressed natural gas has particulate matter that's emissions that are less than diesel, recent research has shown that the particulate matter emitted by compressed natural gas buses is more, the harm is more on human health is more than had been previously known. And in addition, there are the greenhouse gas emissions. And again, by comparison to diesel, when one figures in the methane that is emitted in producing the natural gas itself, in fact, these natural gas-powered buses produce more greenhouse gas than diesel. This is a situation which is harmful to the planet in terms of greenhouse emissions, in terms of particulate emissions. It's harmful to children, to adult health, and so I would ask that the county board would direct commission staff to go out and monitor this situation, and if one cannot enforce the three-minute law, they'll at least make sure it's, that this is no more than 10 minutes, and that there are not these routine violations for up to 30 minutes or more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
I'll go now to Thomas Viles, followed by Jim Rosen.
When the special use permit was issued in the spring of 2022, several neighbors tried to appeal to the BZA, the zoning determination on which it was premised. They weren't successful, but not because they lost the appeal. Incredibly, the BZA weren't notified about it. Why? A county staffer, someone reporting to the county manager, summarily, unilaterally canceled the appeal before it could go to the BZA. In fact, most of the BZA weren't aware of this until they read about it in Arle Now a year later. When they did learn, however, the BZA repudiated 2100 Clarendon for having kept them in the dark. How could they not be outraged? The BZA was prevented from considering the propriety of actions done by county staff in this matter. Simultaneously and perversely, county staff felt free to decide the propriety of BZA, considering anything about this matter. A week after blocking the BZA appeal, the county turned around and filed a slap suit against several neighbors who had attempted the appeal, including an elderly woman who's lived in the neighborhood since the 1960s. When I say the county, I should be more precise. When I say the county, I should be more precise. You, the county board, decided to ambush these voters with a lawsuit. The suit is in your name. You are the plaintiffs. You sued their civic association as well, from whom you'll be hearing in a moment. The intention of this suit appears to be the same as the unlawful cancellation of the BZA appeal, to stop a review of zoning decisions that underlay the issuance of the use permit. I don't understand why these good folks weren't permitted to appeal to the BZA, as was their right. But I do understand that your suit intended the guarantee that they wouldn't. And it's a slap suit, a use of superior resources to haul citizens into court, wear them down and demoralize them, perhaps even beggar them lest they become too vociferous in their concerns about pollution, noise, and other avoidable nuisances such as those which this permit enables. So far, your lawsuit has accomplished nothing. Expensive as it was, it proved insufficient to shut these voters up. Last month, you dropped your claims. But what further legal retaliation awaits these citizens? I'm sure we all want to know. Certainly, the insults didn't stop. When neighbors expressed concern about the suit at one of your meetings last year, three of you associated yourself with the ludicrous position that it was the neighbors who initiated this litigation. Let that sink in. You brought a slap suit against your own citizens, and then three of your number posed as the victims of the litigation. Sadly, two of these three are no longer with us, so they have lost the opportunity to correct this obvious misapprehension as publicly as it was propagated. One of you still can, though. You may wonder at the disparity in vigor with which Quincy Park North responds to such matters. Please bear in mind that the history of the county's treatment of QPM is a long one.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jim Rosen.
Well, not good morning, good afternoon. My name is Jim Rosen. I'm president of the Boston Virginia Square Civic Association. Of course, the area covered by the BVSA includes the Quincy site. The BVSA opposed the county board's May 14, 2022 grant of a special exception use permit for the operation idling and parking of up to 29 art buses on the county board-owned Quincy site. We did so because such use was and is in violation of the law and the 1985 deed of covenant. Now, here we are today, 19 months later, and the BVSA continues to oppose such use, ask that the current members of the county board promptly terminate the use permit. We take strong exception with the staff report's characterization of the level of compliance with the use permit. In that regard, the report makes no mention of the occasional looping of buses in front of rather than behind building number two, the frequent traversing of the buses onto the CO-10 portion of the Quincy site, not the M1 portion, the trucks and other vehicles that position themselves in the CO-10 portion of the Quincy site, leaving their engines running for 30 minutes to several hours, as noted, and the many other aspects of the activity at the Quincy site that run counter to what Mr. George May represented at the May 2022 board meeting and in his submission for this review. The BVSA and its members would like the county board and the county manager to instruct the county staff to begin immediately to engage in regular and ongoing monitoring of the art bus operations and the other activities at the Quincy site, and to then accurately report on such activity to the county board. The sole mitigation measure provided for in connection with the art bus use was the addition of the acousta fence material. The county's own noise study revealed that the acousta fence would have an inconsequential effect. And I wish to highlight that the acousta fence material for one section of that fence has been lying on the ground since November 2023, something not mentioned in Mr. May's submission. In May 2022, we were encouraged by the nearly unanimous commitment by county board members to the "greatest possible level of mitigation," however, this statement has proven hollow. The county has undertaken no environmental studies to determine the health risks associated with the toxic particulate matter emitted in the fumes of the art buses. The county has not invested in filters to materially reduce the level of particulate matter despite the filter's modest cost. The county has taken no steps to address the idling of the art buses, which is going on far beyond the three minutes permitted under state rules. And the county has not given consideration to using much smaller vans for public transit rather than near-empty art buses. As far as long-term planning, as my neighbor Ms. Myers has noted, we welcome the verbal commitment of the county board that was made at the May 22 meeting to long-term planning for the Quincy site. We all know that a predictable path forward is in the interest of everyone. However, we have yet to see this commitment realized. It's now been nine years since the board acquired an option to purchase, seven years since the purchase of the site, and the last serious planning exercise was the JFAC process that ended almost five years ago without a long-term plan. I ask that the county end the delay and that you publicly commit to funding a long-term planning effort. As a neighborhood, we have an established track record of working with everyone to balance countywide needs with neighbor preferences, and we look forward to sharing specific suggestions when that process begins. In summary, I request that the county board discontinue the use permit for the art buses. However, in the assumption that at least the three holdover members of the county board will approve the continuation of the use permit, I would respectfully request that the board, one, commit to discontinue the use permit immediately upon completion of the permanent art bus maintenance facility. Two, promptly engage a reputable engineering company to conduct an unbiased and independent environmental study of the air quality at the Quincy site. During periods when most, if not all, of the art buses are idling, share the results of the study with the community members in real time. Three, immediately begin regular and ongoing monitoring of all the activities at the site. And four, publicly commit to funding a long-term planning effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen. Is that our final speaker?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Conversation is now with the board. I think with this one, it is more controversial, but I think I'd like to just go ahead and start with a motion, and then we will have some questions and discussion. Mr. Karantonis, let me get us started.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the purposes of introducing discussion. I move to renew the use permit for the commercial parking lot on a portion of the property located at 1425 North Quincy Street. That's RPC number 15-040-0674, subject to the previously approved conditions and with a county board review in one year. That would be in January 2025.
Thank you, sir. Second.
Second.
All right. Motion has been moved and seconded. Mr. Karantonis, would you like to start us off, speak to motion?
I will just briefly say a few things about the motion, and then I will reserve more comments for later that are responsive to what we heard. So the standard of test here is what we are reviewing is a use permit that the county board approved less than 20 months ago, I believe, in May 2022. The standard of test here is to figure out where, there are four things, like general code compliance, building fire zoning, site-specific legal compliance, operations, specifically parking and storage of buses that's occurring in a part of property that is legally permitted to be, additional committed mitigation measures, the acoustic barrier and the mindful organization of operations to reduce the impact on neighbors, and neighborhood compliance, which is the interfacing and intersecting with the neighborhood, with the liaison, with the website, flow of information, and general forthcoming attitude. I think that so far in balance, we have heard that this is happening, that these conditions are fulfilled. So I, this is why I move to continue, to renew, actually, the use permit. However, let me remark that there is a reason why the county board, PAG, in May 2022 insisted in a board review as opposed to an administrative review. The reason is that we respect the fact that parking and operating a bus fleet, small bus fleet, but a bus fleet, in the immediate vicinity of a residential neighborhood, while it is and continues to be necessary for the greater good in Arlington and our community, it also impacts neighbors to a higher and more intense degree that warrants really, you know, additional vigilance and responsiveness. We have, therefore, the responsibility to be thorough and listen very carefully and be responsive to what we hear from our constituents. So and having said that, I will leave it to the discussion to elucidate more.
Thank you, Mr. Karantonis. And I think I'll start at this end and move the other way, just to balance it out. But I will take chair's privilege, if I might first. I'd like to ask our attorney to just talk a little bit about what has been happening with the BZA. I believe this case is coming forward. Could you just give us a little history and how we got to where we are here as far as the BZA is concerned?
Sure. The BZA will be hearing this on, I believe, the 30th of this month. And the suit that has been mentioned by several of the speakers was filed and served after the plaintiffs filed their suit. We had filed it but not served it in anticipation of not having to. But once the plaintiffs filed their own suit, we filed ours, and it's a procedural tactic to see which arguments could be argued first. But there was no intention to go after any plaintiffs without further action. It was defensive movement. That suit has been dropped because the BZA is going to be hearing this on the 31st. The counterclaims by the plaintiffs have also been dropped because we are hearing this on the 31st. And then after that, the remaining suits by the plaintiffs may or may not go forward, depending on what the BZA decides at their meeting.
Thank you. All right. So at the moment, both sides have sort of stopped. We're going to have this hearing, and then everybody's going to kind of take it from there. And that's the 31st of this month.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you. That helps. I just kind of wanted to get that sort of set. Ms. Coffey, you have some questions, comments?
Yeah. You know, I want to start with thinking about long-term planning. The Boston Sector Plan is 15 years older than I am. So I think we can all agree that, you know, that is a portion of the county that is really desperately in need of some attention to figure out what exactly it is that we're trying to do there long-term. I'm not sure exactly who to direct some of these questions to, as staff is on both sides here. But I think I would be interested in hearing, what is the status of the permanent facility and like the timing of that, and the options to, if that is completed, hopefully sooner perhaps than anticipated, terminate this site and move things over to the permanent site?
I think that I'm going to direct that to the applicant.
Mr. May?
The current CIP contains some plans for interim uses at the Quincy site. One of the one is further investment in building one to house fire department logistics. There are several other studies that are underway on what we might do for other county initiatives, and we're still in the very formative phases of that. The building four, as I mentioned, still houses inventory from the COVID period, which emergency management is disposing of. Building three does have what we project as a longer-term use. It is used by the DES Traffic Engineering and Operations to store light poles and signal poles and some of their monitoring equipment. And because of overcrowding in the Trade Center, that was moved there. And there is a parallel study to look further in how to better use the Trade Center, reduce some of its congestion, and perhaps use a better advantage of building three for that.
If I could add, because I know you were asking about the timing of the work on the AOMF down in Charlestown. And current plans were on schedule, but, you know, the introduction of the electric battery technology and backup has proven to be, it's not as easy. It's the first time we've ever done something like that. Our goal is hopefully to be done, was to be done much earlier than the end of 2025, to try to move the buses that are at Quincy Street back to their home base. As far as the timing on that, I like to be cautious, because I don't want to tell everybody it will be done by the end of this calendar year. I don't know, George, or Lynn, or Hui, if you want to add anything specifically about where we are in the construction. I think we're doing better. We will be definitely out of there before the end of 2025. But if I stayed a date right now, I know I'll be wrong. But if you wanted to add anything?
Well, the construction of the building itself is on schedule and will be completed towards the end of '24. Then there'll be a transition period when Lynn's operating staff moves into the building and gets ready to perform maintenance there. We do have a deadline. The lease for our maintenance facility in Alexandria expires on June 30 of '25. So we're certainly working to that target. And I'll let Lynn say more.
I think you pretty much covered it. We have to go through an extensive commissioning process once the building is actually delivered to us. And that takes a little bit of time. But again, our goal is, we have to be out of this, the facility we're using right now by June 30. And so that's our goal.
All right. Thank you. And I think my only other question, you know, I hear the presentation of we're complying with the terms of the use permit. I also hear our neighbors saying, perhaps not. I'm wondering, are there more or further mitigation efforts that we can choose to be taking here? Is there, you know, somewhere that we can meet to hopefully make things a little bit better in the short term, knowing that this is not, hopefully, a long-term use of the site?
With regards to the bus idling, I'm sorry, I can--
No, I know. It's really high over there.
But with regards to the bus idling, we think we've been able to eliminate as much as we can with regards to the proximity that we are to our neighbors. By not backing the buses up, which obviously there's the noise that's associated with that, that has moved it, thank you, Erin, that has reduced as much as we think we can with regards to not hearing that sound of backing up. The sound that's probably heard more than anything is the bus going through its safety checks. So the bus has to be idled, and that's both federal regulation and the manufacturer's regulation, to make sure that that bus is fully safe before we even move it. The most recent thing we've done is we've moved any buses that have to be, that have to be used on the east lot or the lot that's probably closest to the neighbors, we're automatically moving those buses to the front of the building to do all of the pre-trip inspections there. Prior to a month, 45 days ago, when that operator gets to that bus, they start it up, it's idling to raise the air pressure, and they're doing other checks at the same time. So we've tried to mitigate that as well. The other thing that we've done in our conversations with DEQ in noting that that idle time is going to more than likely, like days like today or early this week, that we're going to idle a little bit longer than what's, what the code says. And in those instances, DEQ has asked us, we understand that, can you proactively let us know, even when you see the forecast, that this is probably going to happen, so that we're aware as well? And I think in most cases, we've done almost all that we can do. The big issue is making sure that that bus is safe and the air pressure is being, is building. That's probably more than anything what's being heard. The air pressure is being built. Operators are checking the horns, they're checking doors, they're checking everything to make sure that the bus is kneeling. When the bus is kneeled, if you've ever heard the buses before, when they're kneeled, it makes a noise. We have to make sure that that is sufficient as well for those who are not able to board and have to have some kind of assistance with mobility devices.
Understood. I will pass it along for now.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Karantonis, do you have some questions?
Yes, a couple of. So the first one is for the applicant here. So we have in the board report twice, I found a formulation says, no official complaints or comments from the community were received to the date of the report. What's the difference between official and not official? I mean, to be honest with you, I received, you know, probably in this terminology, a ton of unofficial comments.
Yeah, we're getting-- Yeah, we're getting a lot of comments.
So, so why is there a difference at all? And what, what does it mean for, how should I understand?
Well, I will say, I, when we get notification from the Department of Environmental Quality, let me just say, I did not say it was official or unofficial, but the notice of violation of a code simply means that they have been notified. And it says specifically in their manual that it does not mean there's a decision been made or that we have, have been deemed to receive some kind of enforcement. It simply says that there's a notice of violation. It requires that we have a conversation, that we provide mitigation and how we are responding to that notification, and that's, that's the experience that we've had with, with DEQ.
So relevant to that or follow, and following line to that? So we have seen, we have heard that there are other uses as well on the site, right? And, and I see they're not only relevant to your department, I heard as a manager or so, I saw the photos of the, of the.
Fire department.
Fire trucks, et cetera. So when we are getting inspected, we inspect ourselves in this case, which is a particularly, you know, it's a delicate thing, right? We are inspecting ourselves, sometimes from your own department. So how do we, how do we deal with other users of, of the Quincy Site?
Sure. So I'd be, I'd be happy to answer that. And just to your previous question about the official comments, I wrote that. What I was referring to is I've had plenty of conversations or correspondence with Mr. Rosen throughout this review process. However, at, up until today, Mr. Rosen hadn't provided official comments, meaning never indicated the support or dissatisfaction or objection. However, we, as we noted in the report, there have been community concerns expressed throughout the process or throughout the DES's occupancy here. So we wanted to just reflect that there have been, issues have been identified, however, no, no official position had been provided to us from the Civic Association. In terms of how, and I know it's a little bit awkward here, how, how we're handling this because the county is both the reviewing agency as well as the applicant, but specific to what we look at with this use permit, and I want to stress that, is that we are looking specifically at the use permit. And it's really important to remember that the use permit pertains only to the parking of 29 buses on a very specific portion of the property. That is the area that's zoned M1. And the reason why, when we're investigating this and we're inspecting it, we're doing our inspections with our Inspection Services Division as well as the zoning division, as well as members of the planning division. And we're looking specifically at compliance with the use permit conditions as well as other applicable codes and ordinances. We did note that there was a DEQ investigation. My understanding is that there was no further action between DES and DEQ because no violations were found to substantiate that. However, again, we're only looking at the specific use permit, not other uses that may be occurring on the property. It is a six-acre property, and again, this is only for a portion of the site. And so again, specific to that M1 zone portion, that's outside of the restrictive covenant. That restrictive covenant occurs, if you remember my zoning map, that restrictive covenant is specific to the property that is zones, or the portion of the property is zone CO 1.0. So none of this activity violates that. However, we are aware there are other county uses that occur on the property. It does have three different zoning districts. There are four different buildings. There's a lot of activity going on. But in terms of the 29 bus parking spaces, we did not identify any violations.
So let me add, and you remember that we used that site when COVID happened as a testing site, and we hadn't obviously anticipated that as a potential use. Maybe I'm wrong about this. I'd like to think that we had conversations with the neighbors about how that would work. The specific video and pictures you saw about the fire department, they, the fire department worked for the Army 10-miler to do all of its sort of logistics and sort of, and they, and I talked to the fire chief about it, they did not do a good job of informing the community and sort of, they were, we were a bad neighbor then. We subsequently did use it for the Marine Corps Marathon, and it went much better. So we were learning from that, but there are other activities, as Erin said, that take place on the site.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, and that's very helpful to clarify what it is and is not that we're voting on today and what we're asking to, being asked to approve, and there are the larger issues about, and I don't fault residents for not understanding, it gets, it gets pretty detailed legalistically about, you know, there's this, but it is the whole site and concerns about the whole site we hear at the same time, but that's not exactly what we're voting on today. Thank you. It helped me at an event. Mr. DeFrante?
Thank you. Mr. Rosen identified several concerns. Ms. Coffey, your questions kind of got to the question, got to the issue of immediately unfinishing AOMF. AOMF, what I thought I heard was that finishing AOMF is a multiple parts. There's, you mentioned the electric issue, you know, you could finish the building down in Green Valley, but that's not the, the whole piece. I guess I'd just like to associate as soon as we are finished there, I would like us to move, and that does not mean that we don't have this problem of buses down in Alexandria that we have to address. So defining what finishing at AOMF is, I think I heard from Ms. Rivers and Mr. May, and certainly I feel strongly that we don't want to dilly-dally with like anything that we can. Once we're done, we want to be out of Alexandria. I know that's a huge motivation of the entire transportation team, Ms. Wang and Mr. Rivers, Mr. May, the whole DES team. So I align with that, but I don't want to overpromise on the immediacy of, of finishing. We have to be actually finished at AOMF so that we can handle the buses at the new facility. I have a question about regular, what are, kind of along the lines of the last discussions, what do we do to monitor? You know, when I think about bus drivers in other locations, it's nicer to have the air conditioning on than not, and, and it's nice, you know, particularly when it's cold, but, you know, just, and I am not one who gets up regularly at 4:30 in the morning, but I do think we should have a system in place to monitor there. And so if you could describe for me a little bit about what our system is to monitor if we have one, and I am not one who says every second of every morning, but if you know that there were going to be checks on the process as a driver, then you can be most disciplined. So maybe you could describe the monitoring that we do to make sure that we are fitting within what you've described?
Sure. We have supervision on the lot that's actually monitoring when the operator gets to their vehicle. We have schedules that allow only a certain amount of time for that bus to idle and for that operator to do their safety inspection. And if they leave that lot later than what they're scheduled, the dispatcher will know immediately because that will mean that the bus is actually late going into service. We also have a technician that's on the lot as well, number one, to assist an operator when they try to start that bus or are starting the bus, to make sure that it's, it's on. We even, and Ms. Coffey, going back to your, your ask about mitigation, one of the other mitigating procedures that we did this year after the first notification that we received back in January, we have a technician that actually goes to the bus, starts the bus up, just to make sure it does start, because that's part of the, what the, what the operator is doing as well. They turn that bus off, and Mr. DeFrante, to address your question, you know, when it's hot or when it's cold, the operator wants to make sure they're comfortable, as well as making sure that the passengers are comfortable when that bus gets to that first stop. And that's the reason why we've added having a technician start the bus up, let it idle for the maximum number of minutes that it is capable according to code, turn it off. When that driver goes to the dispatch, get their work for the day, then they go back to the bus, they'll restart it.
Yep.
And then they are able to do their inspections as well and move on.
Great.
But we have supervision in place.
Great. I'll leave it to, to you all to figure as to whether it could be useful or not for three or four times over the next six months, just to show up and, and say, you know, and not in a way that's, doesn't respect the challenge of, my goodness, nationally, the disrespect and the assaults that we have seen on bus drivers is unacceptable. But, you know, you mentioned a supervisor and the technician. Is it useful or not? I don't think I'm in this administering to, because we're looking at, you know, maybe a year left, we hope, it could be 16 or 17 months, we hope less, whether showing up and sort of a spot check that is not a gotcha, but that is a, we care about this and I am here at 4:45. That's, I leave it to you all and the manager, and that's a thought on the regular monitoring in, in service of, I believe, believing that we should have regular monitoring. The tangibleness of what you described, Ms. Rivers, is so helpful that I'm trying to find a tangibleness to the broader oversight and support. So that, I leave it to you guys. Then the question, I have a question, I don't know who to ask this question. We had a couple of comments about three minutes versus 10 minutes. I think it's sort of, has this come to you as county attorney? My impression is that the 10 minutes is our accepted view of this. I don't know whether that is a, Ms. Rivers or, or Ms. Core or who that question is to, but I have confidence, but I like to ask that 10 minutes is the actual applicable amount and that is the right amount. Is that maybe, Ms. Rivers, you look like you might be able to respond, and I don't mean to ask a question without a clear recipient of the question, but I did think it's worth following up.
Yes, I would note that the state code does mention three minutes, but it mentions it specifically about tour buses. It mentions it about specific type of equipment. The federal regulations that we have, we're governed by the United States Department of Transportation. It says 10 minutes, but there's also the caveats of the necessity for the safety checks. Then that's when you move to the realm of what the bus manufacturers say. So we're, we're operating under a number of different guises here.
Got it. For me, it seems like that's reasonable explanation. I suspect that perhaps neighbors are most concerned about instances where it's going over 10 minutes, which I certainly think we could all understand. So those are, those are my questions. With respect to long-term planning, I believe, I'll leave that to, Ms. Cunningham may have a question. I will note that, that this is not the only part of the county where our long-term planning is not as quick as we would want. That does not take the sting out of the, your neighborhood's concerns, but I think probably each of the five of us and certainly staff have gone to places where that individual neighborhood feels that we have not planned quickly enough. Certainly on the north side, Old Dominion, and then there's parts of the Pike for sure that have shared that with me. That does not mean that it is any better for you. It's just a thought that perhaps we're not, there's not a intentional negligence here on our part. We are trying the best we can, but I'll pause on that and leave that to Mrs. Cunningham. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you so much for clarifying some of the monitoring that you do do. I have a question, whether there's record keeping or data around that monitoring. So you've, you've got some people there, are there logbooks or, you know, I love data. Is there some data?
So the, what an operator does when they are actually leaving the yard, they have to notify the dispatcher that they're gone. So they actually come to dispatch window to get their work. They have a allotted amount of time to get to their vehicle, get it started, and then get off the lot. All of this is done by schedule. And so the dispatcher knows immediately if that bus has left on time. If it hasn't, that means there's a maintenance issue or that bus is still sitting there and that operator is still sitting there. So we do have that kind of record.
So if we wanted to look at the month of December, for instance, could we see how many times a bus was there for more than 10 minutes or might have idled for more than 10 minutes? Like, is there some concrete, recognizing things don't always go as we hope they will and plan for them to go? Do we have a way to monitor and see when things are not going the way we expect them to?
I think we can, and I won't say for sure because I have not seen the physical information. I know that there's data we can actually get from our, from the vehicle itself, and so that is a follow-up question that I can, I can get back with you.
Okay, that'd be great. And then on the 10-minute, three-minute question, what, we're not the only bus operation in the, in the Commonwealth. Like, what, what do others do? And is it, did I understand that we essentially have a state law that's not practical in this case, and do we need a refinement?
In, in my experience and knowing nationally, the 10-minute rule is essential for bus operations. So that is typically what happens, but because we're all doing the same thing, we're all using the idle time to check that vehicle for readiness, for safety. It's in the guidelines for, for federal, for US DOT information about how to pre-trip a bus. It's in our state code as well about idling a bus for, for safety. And, and then it's also information that's in the OEM's information about the safety, safety checks for vehicles.
But I think you said there's a three-minute rule as well, so are those two code sections in conflict?
The state, the state code, the state code does say it, but it's specific to the type of vehicle. And so when bus is mentioned, the, the way that it's being enforced at this time means all buses, but it specifically says tour buses. So that's a piece of the, the code that can be called into question. But the other information that we have is in writing by bus manufacturers and US DOT.
Gotcha. Okay. My computer's frozen. All right. Other question I heard with the fire department, and some mistakes were made, I think I heard. What have we learned from that and how are we orienting every county or vendor personnel that set foot on that property?
I think I see Mr. Schwartz ready to answer that question.
And I'm, I'm not going to say that I'm going to cover every possible thing that goes on on the site, but I can only speak to specifically the fire department. And, you know, we have large events like the Marine Corps Marathon and other things where we have a lot of people coming, not just from Arlington staff, but from around the area in order to stage their massive events. And so I figured, I think we figured out a better way to do it on the site, and going forward, we learned from that. As far as other uses that have taken place on the site, I think we've tried to be responsive when, for example, I know the police department has done previously, a while ago, did some training there that caused issues, so we just continued that. As far as the four buildings, I think that, you know, we're very careful to make sure that all the work that goes on stays inside those buildings. So I don't know if I can answer anything else more specifically for you, but we do try to notify the neighbors whenever we know something is going to happen, and we give them that advance notice. And I know that we have our communication staff with DES communicating directly with the Civic Association.
So I guess I'd just invite us to think about the challenges we have had and think about a process whereby there's a single gatekeeper or liaison or something that is really anticipating.
There is supposed to be, what the Department of Environmental Services is supposed to as the keeper of that property, and I'll let Hui or someone else speak to this, but our communication staff with Katie O'Brien and Allison Tomaszewski speak directly to the Civic Association on a very regular basis and let them know things that are going to happen. Now, it doesn't mean that we've done it perfectly, and that is our goal and my direction.
Another question on monitoring. So I think, Mr. Schreiber, you mentioned that it's a little awkward to be monitoring ourselves here, and I think that's a question that comes up occasionally on, you know, when the county has so many different roles in the community. What might we do differently there, particularly on this site, given that there is sort of a continued narrative of, of challenges, and it really is a kind of complex covenant, et cetera? How, how could we adopt a third-party monitoring strategy or a different division monitoring or kind of get beyond that awkwardness? or kind of get beyond that awkwardness?
Well, in a typical use permit review, our review parties are primarily within CPHD, so it is our Planning Division, Inspection Services, and Zoning. We are inspecting ourselves, the county. So we are looking for compliance with, compliance with the use permit conditions as approved by the county board. So the specific monitoring elements and the conditions that we reviewed were ensuring that the updated liaison information is provided to the Boston, Virginia Square Civic Association, as well as Cherrydale, which has been, that they have an annual meeting and that that meeting be recorded and those minutes or that recording be provided to the zoning administrator, as well as the public. So we were able to monitor that. DES does maintain an active website, both for this temporary location, as well as the AOMF that's under construction. So all of the status updates are provided in, in real time for, you know, changes to construction schedules, as well as community meetings. And so really in terms of what additional mitigation or monitoring, I think it's up to the board to decide what, what you would want us to take a look at, but we are looking at this from an annual review perspective. As was stated in the report, staff did err in starting our review incorrectly as an administrative review, when it should have been a county board review. Once we realized that, we informed the Civic Association, as well as others, that we would prepare to bring this forward. So we have our annual reviews. We are still with this recommendation. The renewal period within require an additional county board review in one year. And as we stated in the report, that gives us the opportunity to monitor the operations, as well as the status of the completion of the AOMF, to see when this use can be discontinued, if that could in fact occur earlier than what the term is. So again, we're looking for compliances with codes and ordinances. We have not found any violation specific to this use, not speaking to other uses on the property, but specific to this use permit. Nothing was identified or observed, but to the degree that the board wants anything else.
Yeah, let me add, because I think, I understand what you're getting at, which is that to the extent, if there were in the use permit, and maybe you know it better than I do, if it had said that, you know, there's supposed to be, you know, 10 parts per million of a certain kind of emission, and we were going out there and measuring it, that's the responsibility of county staff. If there were doubt that we were doing that, I think there would be an occasion for bringing a third party to give the community a sense of, you know, that we're doing our job. As to the objective criteria laid out in the use permit, I think that we have looked at it and we've said, either we put up the acoustic fence or we didn't. We either put up the landscaping or we didn't. I think that it may have been that we didn't do, put up all the landscaping first and then we fixed that. I'm not sure this is a case where we would need third-party monitoring. I would never rule out the possibility that perhaps, you know, our measurements needed to be double-checked, and we do that, I think, in appropriate circumstances. So I didn't want to foreclose what you're getting at, which is that as good as we are, it's okay to have other people check it. I wouldn't have a problem with that. But in this specific circumstance, I'm not sure that that is necessary, but again, if it's the board's will to do something differently, we could do that.
Great, thank you. And thank you for acknowledging the administrative gap. And I would just want to also acknowledge that that was on both sides. So the board actually should have noticed as well. And so I'd like to take as an action for us and staff to make sure that that double-checking happens going forward, because that, that should not be an additional component here. Last question is on the long-term planning. You know, I like long-term planning almost as much as data, and I can't help but notice in the CIP, we've got nearly $12 million kind of marked in there for 26, I think, for Quincy Site Planning. Is, can you say more about what is anticipated there?
If, I would have to look at what you're looking at, because I think you may be talking about Quincy, were you talking about Quincy Park?
There's two different ones, Quincy Park and Quincy Site Planning. I may, I may not be reading it properly, but I think.
I'm not going to be able to speak that directly.
Let's take that as an action item to come back.
Yeah, and but let me at least speak to the question, because it was raised and by people who came and talked about, what are the county's plans on a long-term basis? And I know that JFAK took a look, and I'm, I'm looking at Susan and Matt on this, because you were both on JFAK. I think 2018 was the time when there was a potential.
Seventeen.
Yeah, 2017, 2018, a potential plan laid out. And I think it was correct that at that time, there was no particular recommendation from JFAK about bus storage. As a matter of fact, we had a lot, you know, different conversations about self-storage on that site. You know, I would say that if it's the board's will and we, I think the place to have that conversation is in the CIP. I would note, this is not meant to be disagreeable with anybody, but the circumstances we face in 2024, where we have a, I think relatively strong push that I welcome to moving to an electric bus fleet, and the need, the AOMF, when it's completed, will not be able to house all the buses that we would need if it were a fully-electric fleet. So we'll have to be looking over the 10-year period, potentially, for other places in the county to have quiet, clean, you know, where we have buses. And I would just say, from my perspective, this site could be a potential location for that. But I can't reach that conclusion without us going through a planning process with the community. So I think it would be appropriate, in the context of the CIP, to weigh all those pluses and minuses and have that conversation.
Okay, terrific. I think that's all I've got for the moment.
Okay, thank you. You were sort of heading in the same, same direction. I'm not as much of a data geek as, as you are, Ms. Cunningham, but it has occurred to me, it would be really nice if we did have some record keeping that actually would be up on the webpage, and then, and then we don't have the people coming in and saying, this is going on too long, it's going for 30 minutes, and then the SFC, no, no, it's only 10, no, it's 30, it's 10, and we don't have any way to kind of corroborate that. So I'm not going to give any real, you know, demands on how we do it, but if we could come up with a way to keep better track of what's going on in that site?
And I think that Ms. Rivers said that we would take a look at what kind of data we have and whether it is in a format, we'll get back to you. When I say we'll get back to you, I'd like to get back to you by Tuesday, but if we can't get back to you by Tuesday, I'm getting, you know, maybe we can't do that. We will get back to you and the community as soon as we can with the answer to that question.
Yeah, that would be really helpful. And just to expand it, I don't know if it's possible to, I have picked up now, Ms. Rivers is concerned about the buses, somebody else is concerned about the fire trucks and what's going on there and other places. So I don't know if there's a way of having that, that whole site. You did say there's a webpage, I have not looked at it, I should have thought to do that, but I did not. If there's a way of having kind of a report of what's going on, real time, as much as we can do it, and people see some, what's happening, they can go on and see it, rather than a, you know, annual or monthly report or something.
Right, and I think that I'm, I don't have, Greg isn't here, but we're going to have that as part of the, a real-time sort of check on, on the webpage where we can do that.
If that's possible, yeah.
Not only, but, and I would just say, we like to put things on webpages, but that isn't the way people live their lives. They don't like go to a webpage and see what's happening to them. So we'll affirmatively, you know, give that information to people.
Oh, thank you. But I actually think posted, because this seems to be a group that's pretty tied into what's happening and pretty tied into data, and I suspect would to check the webpage. So anyway, what we can do, I'll be interested in hearing back. I think that would be helpful. I do want to address briefly, Ms. Myers mentioned my thought about covering over I-66. I haven't dropped that, I still think about it. The state owns that, it's a very heavy lift, but I am still interested in that issue. And I think all of this, where we've, several of us have mentioned, I think is when we get the CIP, and we are dealing with that this spring, that I think some issues with this site can come up and we can talk about long-term planning and see what's, see what we might do. I expect that to be part of our CIP discussion. Okay. Anything else, or are we ready to vote? All right. Yes? Oh, final cut, people might want to make final comments. Yes, Mr. Carringtonis, go ahead.
Yes, first of all, I, I visited the site several times, monitoring, you know, last year I, or the year, actually, the year that we discussed that and we decided that, I was chairing the Air Quality Committee with the Metropolitan Council of Governments. And so we had absolutely incredible, epic discussions about how we monitor these sites. You know, regular sites, that would be the AOMF. And I remember that I stumbled upon one of our pollution, air pollution measure, automatic measurement devices that we have up on Route 50 in Pershing and at the church there. And I thought, why don't we have them, you know, as a regular occurrence? Why don't we have this, this measuring points where it really matters? And, you know, same, same applies to noise, et cetera. When buses idle, then we, you know, we definitely can measure if this is, you know, elevating the entire, the noise of the entire site. And we can keep track of that, because these are automated systems and we don't need to get into the conflict of who inspects whom, et cetera. There is a, there is a readout from, from the instrument, and this is something that's important to me. And time and again, I've, I've been thinking that what we are, what we ought to do here is to do an after-action review. I very much hope that AOMF will be ready and you, we will not need to review this again next year. But regardless, I think that we must draw some consequences here and, and learn some lessons about how we interact with the community, how we measure impact, especially in sensitive areas. Green Valley is not less sensitive than the neighbors on Quincy Street. So for, I'm already asking that for, for the next neighborhood that will be, you know, hosting a significant, bigger art bus fleet. And I think that this is one of the, of the actions of, our actions that needs an after-action review at some point when we have concluded. My, my intention is to vote for the motion. I made the motion. I, I think it's good news that AOMF is going forward and is finally, will be finally there. I visit that very often, almost every week. So I hope that at least the immediate impact on the neighbors will be relieved, but that leaves the, of course, the issue about the future on the table. And this will be definitely, and I agree with Ms. Cunningham on that, a CIP discussion item, one of the most serious ones. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carringtonis. Ms. Coffey, any concluding remarks? You don't have to have them.
No.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. Ms. Cunningham?
This is where we have more lessons for the new, new board members. But if, if I have some elements I would like to change about the motion or amend, is now the time to do that?
Oh, yes, you can, you can, you can offer an amendment? Yes, absolutely.
And is it easiest to do all one amendment? Yes?
Probably.
Or do you want to?
Probably.
Let me lay them out, and you can tell me.
Yeah, if you have it in writing and can send it to us, but, and our clerk will try to put it up on the screen.
Okay, that may be beyond my capabilities, but I will try. Let me just run through it first and we can work through this. There are three things I'd like us to consider amending. One would be the date of the follow-up review, recognizing we are already seven months beyond where we should have done the first time and given continued consternation in the community. Could we consider that as a six-month review? Second is the idea of monitoring. So without knowing what that monitoring report looks like, committing to saying we will have a monthly report of whatever data we can have, and we may push the content over time. And then the third would be, could we name a single-site liaison or someone who is the clearinghouse for all the concerns, or maybe we already have one? But that those concerns for the period of this six months be shared back with the board regularly, monthly?
All right. So I think if we put the motion up and see, but let's, let's check with staff. And I don't know that all these things need to be motions.
Perfect.
And that's up to you. I think staff has actually already committed to coming back with some reports, so I hesitate maybe to put it in here now. Any reaction from staff at the moment with these changes proposed by Ms. Cunningham?
Sure, so speaking to the first one in terms of the review, we recommended a one-year county board review, six months, we just put it in July. Be happy to come back to the board if the board so chooses. In terms of the monitoring, I would just ask that you provide some objective type of monitoring that you want us to observe and that we can report back on. And then on the third one, in terms of the single point of contact, I believe we already have that, or the applicant already has that. For example, there was a change in that point of contact last year, and it is now being handled by a new communications member, and that information was provided back out to the Boston, Virginia Square Civic Association, Cherrydale, as well as the zoning administrator. So I think we're already covered on that condition, but the first two we could address.
Great. And may I ask Mr. Rosen a question about?
You may, if you'd like, I think.
Do you all care whether it's 12 months or six months?
Do you care, you would prefer the six months?
Yep. Okay. Then I think the motion would just be the date.
Yeah, and I think, so it's six months, and I think we're probably fine with that. And we, if the maker of the motion considers that a friendly amendment, we don't have to, actually have to hold a vote. Does the, does the maker of the motion?
I would accept the, the friendly amendment, just as a word, not of caution. I agree in general, but this is not, this takes some staff time, additional staff time, et cetera. The point here is to, you know, supervise the, what I expect to be the final stretch of this in a most, you know, proper way. I'm fine if, if six months seems to be, you know, preferable, I'm, I'm okay with that, no problem with this.
Okay, and I think staff's okay with it, and I think.
But I don't know if, we're, we're at the last third of this trajectory.
Yeah, but I think, are we, we're all okay with that? Just taking with our counsel, we can take that's a friendly amendment and the, the review's in six months, that'll be in July.
So accepted, the amendment.
Okay, is that correct? We got the right parliamentary procedure, Ms. Cor, okay. Ms. Cunningham, you had one other point?
Nope, that's all.
Nope, you're good, okay. And I think on the, the monitoring report, we're going to get, manager's going to come back to us talking about that, and there is a person apparently that is available. And if that's not working, we'll hear about it and we'll, we'll check on that, but that is already apparently been taken care of. Okay, so the motion's changed just a little bit, but not very much. Mr. DeFranti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm, I'm fine with six months. Because we do not meet in August, I could have been fine with eight months or getting to September, because there will be a lot of time and we want the monitoring there. But that, let's not relitigate. It's totally reasonable and right that you brought the amendment. Sometimes we, I have learned that when I offer an amendment right on the dais, it is most confusing, so sometimes I try and give a little bit of a heads up. But I'm fine with the six months. I would just say on the other two pieces, which I don't think are now amendments, I think they're just language and agreement, that if the manager is good with, if it ends up that you can get us a monitoring plan by Tuesday, great. And if it needs to be next month, next month seems like a reasonably smart-type goal of a thing to do with respect to that. That's my two cents. And so all those thoughts with respect to the, there's one other piece that Mr. Rosen mentioned that we have not, we have each touched on, but with, with air quality, I think it's a fair concern. There's significant research now that diesel buses, which all of our kids ride in every day, are much, much worse than we thought. But I, I think that we're facing a, a challenge and we're hoping to get to electric buses. It's not one that I think that ultimately in the short term, we are, we are in better air quality by far when that, than when I was growing up as, as a kid. And I do take to heart if this were next to my house, but I also know that this is a, and I would, I like to think that I honestly would be okay with a time-limited duration here. But I understand the covenant, and I understand that you've lived there for a long time. It's one that ultimately I think I have to pass on. But I hope that the oversight that we've gotten in terms of six months is at least some consolation to the four or five of you.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion before us that's a friendly amendment, six-month review rather than a year. I think we're all fine with that. And we have surfaced a lot of issues that aren't really to deal specifically with this item that we're voting on, but that opened up the larger question that I do expect we will be discussing with the CIP. And I know it's a discussion that's going on for quite, quite some time, and we will continue that discussion. Appreciate people coming in and following up with us. So with that, I think I will call to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, motion passes 5-0, I believe. And with that, Ms. Jacobs, I think we are finished for today. Do we have any other items to come before the board?
No, there are none.
All right, we are in recess until this coming Tuesday, when I think it will be warmer. Everybody stay warm out there today. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah.